Clerk, will you please call roll call?
Certainly, and I think we might have a member on Zoom as well. So, let's see. Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Carbasi. I believe he is online. Is that correct, Brianna? He's here. Then we have Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Maxwell, or Vice President Maxwell.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Bredefeld.
Here.
And President Asparza.
Present. Okay, so what we're going to do today, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda, but just before we do that, I want to give folks kind of a rundown. Today's a special meeting called specifically to hear two reports on our potential approaches as a city to tackle the housing crisis here within Fresno. So I wanted to give this its own separate time, and it deserves that, carved out away from our regular council meetings. Surely, we have heard about housing in our regular council meetings, and we'll continue to hear about it. But I think this needed its own sort of carve out of several hours. And so what we're going to do here, per the agenda, is we are going to hear a workshop on the Here to Stay report. Following that, we will hear a workshop on the One Fresno Housing Plan by the mayor's administration and other authors. And then, we will proceed to take public comments. This is strictly workshops, so public comment is not something that's required, but it is something that I do want to do in order to have residents' resident input into the workshops and to how council and the city at large can approach the housing crisis. Following public comment, at that point, we will go into council member comments. That'll be the council members' opportunities to ask questions of the folks who did the presentations and/or deliberate about which direction that we are going to go. So with that, again, a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we had a third on that, too. Everybody's eager. All right, clerk, please call roll call.
Certainly, and I think we might have a member on Zoom as well. So, let's see. Councilmember Soria. Councilmember Carbasi. I believe he is online. Is that correct, Brianna? He's here. Then we have Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Maxwell, or Vice President Maxwell.
Present.
Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Bredefeld.
Here.
And President Asparza.
Present. Okay, so what we're going to do today, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda, but just before we do that, I want to give folks kind of a rundown. Today's a special meeting called specifically to hear two reports on our potential approaches as a city to tackle the housing crisis here within Fresno. So I wanted to give this its own separate time, and it deserves that, carved out away from our regular council meetings. Surely, we have heard about housing in our regular council meetings, and we'll continue to hear about it. But I think this needed its own sort of carve out of several hours. And so what we're going to do here, per the agenda, is we are going to hear a workshop on the Here to Stay report. Following that, we will hear a workshop on the One Fresno Housing Plan by the mayor's administration and other authors. And then, we will proceed to take public comments. This is strictly workshops, so public comment is not something that's required, but it is something that I do want to do in order to have residents' resident input into the workshops and to how council and the city at large can approach the housing crisis. Following public comment, at that point, we will go into council member comments. That'll be the council members' opportunities to ask questions of the folks who did the presentations and/or deliberate about which direction that we are going to go. So with that, again, a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we had a third on that, too. Everybody's eager. All right, clerk, please call roll call since we have members on Zoom as well.
Actually, Councilmember Carbasi just came in the chamber.
Does he hand you out candies and the...
Okay, well, is there any opposition to approving the agenda? Seeing none, motion passes. And with that, we will get on with the first workshop, and that'll be the Here to Stay report. Sofia, you'll be opening that up.
Council President, can I quickly have the interpreters let address the audience and let them know that their services are available?
Please, please do.
And so in the chambers, we do have Spanish, Mung, and Punjabi interpreters if needed, and they will let you know what their services are.
Fantastic. Fantastic. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to take diligent notes and reserve your questions, comments, and all that for after we've heard both reports and after we've heard public comment, that we kind of get to hear it all. And then, the end, the third part of the meeting will be our opportunity to digest that, deliberate, and ask questions. So even though the presenters will be able to kind of do their presentation start to finish without interruption, you're definitely not finished. We'll be back to do our cross-examinations, as you've seen from this council before.
President, just one point of clarification, if I may.
Please.
I noticed that the author of the Here to Stay report is not present and presenting. What's the reason for the author not presenting when we have our deputy mayor presenting the city's report?
Sofia, you're opening this up, but you're not the only person. Correct. Come on down.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council, Sofia Pagelatis with the Planning and Development Department. And it is our understanding that Dr. Thomas with the Thrive-Ins Group will participate with a presentation. She was planning on participating remotely this afternoon. And Brianna, do we see her on? We don't, okay. I am communicating with her, and I will continue to do so.
Okay, well, we're ready to open up. Were you part of the Here to Stay report presentation, or were you not part of that?
Yes.
Well, I mean, if you want to go ahead and kick that off for us, and then we will integrate the author once they are present, either on Zoom or in the chamber. But I think it was always the plan to have you at least kick it off.
Council President, can we allow the other interpreters to also give their statements so that people in the audience know? Because we only allowed the Spanish speakers, can we allow the other?
Yeah, that's fine. That's no problem.
Thank you, sir. Satyakal ji, meh Punjabi de dhopa shere de taarte aaj ithe thode samne passtit hui haan. So meh thonu information den liye ithe khadi hui haan ki je kise nuvi Punjabi de vich naal di naal dhopa shere di load pendi hai. Ya tu si saari di saari jadi jaankari hai Punjabi de vich lena chane ho. Ta saade kol devices a jadi hai tu si saanu picche jaake saade kolon le sak de hai. Je de vich ase apne mic de utte jado bolange, ta thonu jadha ho Punjabi de vich letha jadha hai ho sunnu milega. So kise nuvi load hove saade naal sampaark picche ake kar sakda hai. Tanvaji.
Niya jo kholu pei, niya lo kujat mon salutu nahi jate, niya da na saton ka mon salutu na lo niya ta ta aani laan da na kumali mo. Ja mic khatne nahi na, o chanda.
And we do have Spanish, Mung, and Punjabi interpreters for the folks viewing through Zoom.
Okay. Thank you very much, Council President, members of the council. You know who I am, because I just said so. And today, I'm going to present the planning background, the process, and the priorities that emerged from the Here to Stay reports. And clicker. Are we clicking? Let's see. I don't, doesn't want to advance for me, Brianna. Next slide, please. Yes. As I get started, I would like to recognize the contributions of the Anti-Displacement Task Force that met eight times during the course of this project and put in a lot of work and effort to help these reports come to fruition. Next slide, please. The planning goals that guide the city's displacement work come from three main plans. The downtown neighborhoods community plan, the housing element, and the southwest Fresno specific plans. These plans all call for new investment in under-invested areas of the city and recognize the need to prevent displacement. Next slide, please. In addition, the Transform Fresno program, established in 2018, called for a displacement avoidance plan. Next slide. Taken together, all of the plans called for creation of a task force to focus on preventing displacement, engaging a broad group of stakeholders to study and track displacement, and if found to be occurring, identifying actions or policies to address it. Next slide. The mission of the task force is summarized in the resolution that created it in 2018. According to the resolution, the task force is to explore ways to provide opportunities for low-income residents and merchants to remain in their neighborhoods if displacement is observed due to substantial and sustained increases in rent. It calls for annual data gathering on displacement, and it further calls for funding mixed income and affordable housing within the project area and working with property owners to ensure long-term affordability. It is focused on formerly distressed areas of the city that are being improved. Next slide, please. The Thrive-Ins Group was commissioned by the city in March of 2020 to help study displacement and recommend policies that would help prevent or reduce it. The fact that this work commenced at the start of what would be a two-year pandemic was a condition we didn't expect and certainly challenged all of us to be creative with our outreach efforts. I would like to recognize the Thrive-Ins Group and its founder, Dr. Destiny Thomas, for leading the way with very creative community engagement within the Transform Fresno project area. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, back. Sorry, you're ahead of me. After a robust initial phase of community engagement, in June of 2021, the Here to Stay public draft report was released for a 90-day public comment period. The goals of the report were threefold: to receive and include feedback from the public, to recommend a phased approach to focus on those most in need of anti-displacement policies, and to begin the conversation about how displacement prevention programs could be implemented. The report included 46 policy ideas organized into seven topic areas or policy bundles. Next slide. And you can see those categories here. They range from community ownership to dignified housing and legacy considerations. Next slide, please. The outreach that was conducted during this 90-day period was multifaceted to try and reach people where they were. During the comment period, staff and Thrive-Ins maximized opportunities through several different methods. A survey was deployed in both electronic and hard copy format. Comment cards were placed in several information hubs throughout the project area. Four community study sessions were held, and four partner organization meetings were held. Next slide. Here's the data on the input that was received during the 90-day comment period. Next slide.
And then we will proceed to take public comments. This is strictly workshop, so public comment is not something that's required, but it is something that I do want to do in order to have residents resident input into the workshops and to how council and the city at large can approach the housing crisis. Following public comment, at that point, we will go into council member comments. That'll be the council members opportunities to ask questions of the folks who did the presentations and or deliberate about which direction that we are going to go. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, we had a third on that, too. Everybody's eager. All right. Clerk, please call roll call since we have members on Zoom as well.
Actually, Councilmember Carbasi just came in the chamber.
Does he hand you out candies in the audience?
Okay, well, is there any opposition to approving the agenda? Seeing none, motion passes. And with that, we will get on with the first workshop. And that'll be the here to stay report. Sophia, you'll be opening that up.
Council President, can I quickly have the interpreters let address the audience and let them know that their services are available?
Please, please do.
And so in the chambers, we do have Spanish, Mong and Punjabi interpreters if needed, and they will let you know what their services are.
Fantastic. Fantastic. I'm also going to ask my colleagues to take diligent notes and reserve your questions, comments and all that for after we've heard both reports and after we've heard public comment. Then we kind of get to hear it all. And then the end, the third part of the meeting will be our opportunity to digest that, deliberate and ask questions. So even though the presenters will be able to kind of do their presentation start to finish without interruption, you're definitely not finished. We'll be back to do our cross examinations, as you've seen from this council before.
President, just one point of clarification, if I may.
Please.
I noticed that the author of the here to stay report is not present and presenting. What's the reason for the author not presenting when we have our deputy mayor presenting the city's report?
Sophia, you're opening this up, but you're not the only person. Correct, come on down.
Good afternoon, Council President, Members of the Council. Sophia Pagalatas with the Planning and Development Department. And it is our understanding that Dr. Thomas with the Thrive-Ins Group will participate with a presentation. She was planning on participating remotely this afternoon. And Brianna, do we see her on? We don't, okay. I am communicating with her and I will continue to do so.
Okay, well, we're ready to open up. Were you part of the here to stay report presentation or were you not part of that?
Yes.
Well, I mean, if you want to go ahead and kick that off for us and then we will integrate the author once they are present, either on Zoom or in the chamber. But I think it was always the plan to have you at least kick it off.
Council President, can we allow the other interpreters to also give their statement so that people in the audience know? Because we only allowed the Spanish speakers, can we allow the other?
Yeah, that's fine, that's no problem.
Thank you, sir. Satshikalji, meh Punjabi de dhopashyade taarte aaj ithe thode samne posthit hui haan. So meh thonu information den liye ithe khadi hui haan ki je kise nuvi Punjabi de vich naal di naal dhopashyade load pendi hai. Ya tu si sari di sari jadi jaankariye Punjabi de vich lena chane ho. Ta saade kol devices a jadiya tu si sanu picche jaake saade kolon le sakde ya. Je de vich ase apne mic de utte jado bolange, ta thonu jada ho Punjabi de vich letha jadaa ho sunnu milega. So kise nuvi load hove saade naal sampark picche ake kar sakda hai, Tanwaji.
And we do have Spanish, Mong and Punjabi interpreters for the folks viewing through Zoom.
Okay, Sophia, are you ready? Come on down.
Thank you very much, Council President, Members of the Council. You know who I am because I just said so. And today, I'm going to present the planning background, the process and the priorities that emerged from the here to stay reports. And clicker, are we clicking? Let's see. I don't, doesn't want to advance for me, Brianna. Next slide, please. Yes. As I get started, I would like to recognize the contributions of the Anti-Displacement Task Force that met eight times during the course of this project and put in a lot of work and effort to help these reports come to fruition. Next slide, please. The planning goals that guide the city's displacement work come from three main plans. The Downtown Neighborhoods Community Plan, the Housing Element and the Southwest Fresno Specific Plans. These plans all call for new investment in under-invested areas of the city and recognize the need to prevent displacement. Next slide, please. In addition, the Transform Fresno Program, established in 2018, called for a Displacement Avoidance Plan. Next slide. Taken together, all of the plans called for creation of a task force to focus on preventing displacement, engaging a broad group of stakeholders to study and track displacement, and if found to be occurring, identifying actions or policies to address it. Next slide. The mission of the task force is summarized in the resolution that created it in 2018. According to the resolution, the task force is to explore ways to provide opportunities for low-income residents and merchants to remain in their neighborhoods if displacement is observed due to substantial and sustained increases in rent. It calls for annual data gathering on displacement, and it further calls for funding mixed income and affordable housing within the project area and working with property owners to ensure long-term affordability. It is focused on formerly distressed areas of the city that are being improved. Next slide, please. The Thrive-Ins Group was commissioned by the city in March of 2020 to help study displacement and recommend policies that would help prevent or reduce it. The fact that this work commenced at the start of what would be a two-year pandemic was a condition we didn't expect and certainly challenged all of us to be creative with our outreach efforts. I would like to recognize the Thrive-Ins Group and its founder, Dr. Destiny Thomas, for leading the way with very creative community engagement within the Transform Fresno Project area. Next slide, please. Oh, actually, back, sorry, you're ahead of me. After a robust initial phase of community engagement, in June of 2021, the Here to Stay public draft report was released for a 90-day public comment period. The goals of the report were threefold: to receive and include feedback from the public, to recommend a phased approach to focus on those most in need of anti-displacement policies, and to begin the conversation about how displacement prevention programs could be implemented. The report included 46 policy ideas organized into seven topic areas or policy bundles. Next slide. And you can see those categories here. They range from community ownership to dignified housing and legacy considerations. Next slide, please. The outreach that was conducted during this 90-day period was multifaceted to try and reach people where they were. During the comment period, staff and Thrive-Ins maximized opportunities through several different methods. A survey was deployed in both electronic and hard copy format. Comment cards were placed in several information hubs throughout the project area. Four community study sessions were held and four partner organization meetings were held. Next slide. Here's the data on the input that was received during the 90-day comment period. Next slide. And I did want to highlight the community study sessions that were held during the comment period. There were four of these, and they were facilitated by staff to allow exploration and discussion of the ideas in the Here to Stay Report. Next slide. Although these workshops were remotely conducted, we found a way to facilitate small group discussions. And here is a snapshot of our discussion board for one of the topics at a study session. Next slide. All of the documents, meeting notices, et cetera, were hosted on the Transform Fresno website. Next slide. At the end of the 90-day comment period, the survey results were compiled and organized into a second Here to Stay Report called the Public Comment Report. The report also reprioritized the 46 policy recommendations according to the input received. It was this report that was the basis for the Anti-Displacement Task Force's recommendations on policy priorities at their meeting in December of last year. Next slide, please. The next two slides show the top 15 priorities recommended by the Thrive-Ins Group as a result of the input, color-coded to show how the task force and staff aligned. The items highlighted in green were recommended by the task force and are supported by staff. The items in orange were also recommended by the task force with staff willingness to explore. These are all described in further detail in the Here to Stay Reports. So on this first slide, we have fair chance housing, eviction right to counsel, rent stabilization, conversion restrictions and affordable and perpetuity designations, increase local higher and living wage minimums on local contracts, community land trust, homeowner and renter assistance programs, and a Here to Stay deposit program. And these continue on the next slide, if you could give us the next slide, please. And these are the remaining recommendations. Again, color-coded to indicate alignment with task force and staff recommendations. Moratorium on encampment sweeps, public health impact reports, environmental justice and climate resiliency planning, Fresno-specific universal design standards, a Department of Anti-Displacement and Homelessness Intervention, an affordability index, a right to return home and dignified tiny house villages and scattered site housing. Next slide. In addition, the task force made recommendations that were not in the Here to Stay Report but which they felt were important. The first one was they did request a just cause provision to the rent stabilization policy, and that is in the report, but these next two were not. And one is to implement inclusionary zoning. And the third one was to develop at least five policy recommendations to support businesses staying in their location. So a little more focus on merchant displacement. Next slide. Finally, staff also added three additional policies that it recommends pursuing in the Here to Stay Report. They are an Open Fresno GeoHub platform that would make it easier for the public to track entitlements and plans, a language justice clearinghouse that would ensure we could deploy translation and communication services effectively, and an independent youth housing coordination function to ensure that the needs of our youth are addressed in our housing efforts. Next slide, please. So that brings me to the conclusion of the presentation. As you know, this workshop is informational only, and the next step would be to schedule a future meeting to take action. The Transformative Climate Communities Displacement Avoidance Plan requires the city to pursue three priorities to reduce or prevent displacement. And the Housing Element Downtown Displacement Prevention Program calls for continued implementation as well. That concludes my presentation, and of course, I'll be here to answer questions.
Thank you, Sophia. Well, again, we're going to get to questions here after the presentations and public comment. But first, we do want to give the author an opportunity to round out the presentation. If the author is on Zoom, could please raise your hands? We're not seeing you on.
Ariselli is telling me it was listed under Thrive-Ins Group, are you seeing that?
No, there's no such name on Zoom.
I know Imani or Emile, Imani is her assistant.
Okay, I think we're good to go. Is the author with us on the panel, the Zoom panel?
Yes, I believe I promoted to panelist Imani Wyatt. If this is you, you are on as a panelist and you can unmute and show your video.
Hello?
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 Yes.
Are you able to hear me?
We are able to hear you, yes. If you'd like to produce your content and begin with the presentation.
Okay, this is Dr. Destiny Thomas. I apologize for that delay. I know we're short on time, so I'm going to go ahead and share my slides. If someone could please give me a verbal cue that this is working properly? Are you able to see my slides?
We are able to see the slides, yes.
Great, thank you. And so, thank you, Sophia, for the overview. You covered a lot, and that's going to allow me to move quickly through what I have here today. As Sophia mentioned, the Thrive-Ins Group was tasked with doing a couple of things. One, our primary task was to identify three recommendations that the city of Fresno could implement to offset displacement that was suspected of taking place or that could happen as a result of the Transformative Climate Communities Project and other development in the area. We submitted a proposal recognizing that in order to make any recommendation, we needed to do comprehensive community engagement. And this proposal was accepted and awarded literally a couple of months before the onset of the pandemic. So as Sophia mentioned, the approach to the work and even some of our ideas about what the final deliverables would be had to be modified in order to support undergoing a true public process here. So we started our work doing comprehensive community engagement. And a couple of the questions that we wanted to ask that engagement were: one, is displacement currently taking place? If so, why? If not, what's the likelihood that displacement could take place? And what we discovered while literally doing community engagement was that not only was displacement taking place, but that it was happening so rapidly that it was very difficult to maintain a constant stream of communication with the residents that we were engaging. We would knock on a door one week, have fruitful discussion. And the next week, that same door would be boarded up and the furniture would be outside on the curb. So we quickly moved to the next questions. What are the potential factors that could be contributing to future displacement? And how could we mitigate further displacement from happening? And at Thrive-Ins Group, we have a policy and a value of doing whatever we can to achieve immediate relief from suffering. So regardless of whatever the overarching goals of the project are, the politics surrounding the project, if we identify suffering while undergoing our work, we incorporate that into the solution gathering. So, let's see. Here's how this happened. We began to identify what our limitations were. Obviously, COVID-19 was one, rapid displacement was another. But we also discovered through our engagement that there is a history of strain between residents and various government processes or city processes over time. So recent changes, recent processes, but also we were meeting third, fourth, fifth generation families who could remember being displaced 30 years ago. And that was getting in the way of them actively participating in civic engagement. One of the questions that this council brought to us before we got fully involved in our work was this question of how are we defining displacement, right? Sometimes people use the term gentrification when they might be meaning something else. So we actually did a literature review analysis of different types of displacement and the different phases of displacement. And while that, those distinctions don't necessarily inform the recommendations that we ultimately made, we found that understanding those phases helped us to identify what some of the causal connections were along the way. We also conducted a social climate analysis and, again, comprehensive community engagement. So as Sophia mentioned, we have public meetings. I myself, along with my staff, did a great deal of canvassing in all forms of weather in Fresno, knocked on thousands of doors and completed thousands of hours of restorative justice sessions where we were working with residents to overcome their fear or displeasure with engaging with the city or engaging in civil service processes so that their voices could be included. Part of the harm reduction that went into or informed our recommendations was that we wanted to make sure we were identifying specific instances of harm and addressing them through the recommendations that we were making. So these aren't, this isn't a list of best practices, right? Although they are best practices, this isn't a random list of best practices. These are policies that we're recommending based on specific harm that we've been able to document occurring in the geography. We also wanted to make sure we identified a specific and intentional beneficiary of the recommended policy. So obviously, folks who've experienced certain types of displacement or housing discrimination or subpar living conditions had recommendations made specifically to resolve their suffering. We also wanted to make sure that we weren't recommending things that posed additional burden or greater burden on folks. So we looked for solutions that weren't asking people to prove their degree of suffering or go jump through some hurdle application process that would make it difficult for them to benefit from these policy recommendations. And then we also sought out opportunities to create permanent redress. So any policy recommendation that solves more than one social problem, right? Helps resolve public health issue, helps resolve mental health issue and secures housing, ranked higher on our list. So in order to design these policies or to come up with these policy recommendations, excuse me. Uh-oh. Hold on, my mic died. Can you hear me still?
Yes, we've been able to hear you this entire time.
Focus groups. Let me just turn this off. We had a series of focus groups where we listened to the community to understand the categories of challenges that they were experiencing. And so what you see here were the solutions that we were able to come up with in partnership with the community. Folks wanted a greater sense of community ownership, accountability, socially responsible development, more transportation access and connectivity, just more protections, direct services, alternatives to eviction and just dignified housing. And so instead of us saying, what policies do you want to see, you know, check a box? We listened to people's issues. And, you know, as the researchers decided we would take these categories and research potential policies to get us to these desired outcomes. Those spaces were called Policy Design Labs. We also, as I mentioned before, wanted to name exactly who was most likely to be experiencing displacement. And so our analysis of who in Fresno was most likely to be experiencing displacement came from three places. One is we looked at the responses to the quantitative surveys that were distributed. We collected oral histories, people who've been in the city for more than 20 years, either working or living, and tracked patterns through the stories that they told. And then the third thing we did was, again, a literature review. We also, that literature review validated the assumptions that we made from the other sources. So we found that aging adults, people with disabilities, youth between the ages of 16 and 26, veterans and people returning home from various forms of institutionalization, so that could include jail, but also hospitalization, forced mental institution, things like that, farmers, farm workers, seasonal workers and people with documentation challenges, third-generation black households, I know that's very specific, but there was something about the data and in our conversations with folks where we continued, we found time and time again that households, black households that had been in Fresno for a very long time were more likely to experience this very rapid and almost violent, some people would call, form of displacement. Similarly, this was an experience that Southeast Asian residents were having, as well as community advocates, people doing nonprofit work, advocacy work, and not being able to maintain dignified housing because of the change in the economy, but also some of the things happening with the political climate. So here is how we ranked the recommendations that came out of this process. This is our decision-making process. We considered how soon can we take action, right? So when we got this long laundry list, and we actually had over 80 policies that were whittled down to 46. When we looked at the list, we said, okay, which of these can be implemented in the near term? Those ranked higher. We also, like I said before, looked at which of these policy recommendations fix more than one issue, right? Show up at the intersection of suffering in the community. And then we also looked at how much funding potential does this policy have? So as a person and as an entity that is often relied upon by funders at the state and federal level to evaluate infrastructure proposals, policies, make recommendations on how to fix existing programs, we are well-versed in understanding the types of policies and programs that are more likely to be funded within the next 10 to 20 years. So we added that as a layer of analysis in our recommendations as well. We then shared those recommendations with the Displacement Avoidance Task Force. I always call it the wrong thing, hopefully that's the acronym, Anti-Displacement Task Force. And we initiated an official public comment period, which initially was going to be 15, 30 days, but ended up being many more days. I think Sophia shared the specific number of days with you. But in addition to the thousands, I think we had over 3,000 hours, person hours of community engagement happen just to write the report. So in the public comment period, we extended that engagement. We had four virtual workshops. We continued to do canvassing. We shared this work with the city of Fresno. So, you know, I want to return the affirmation that Sophia made because I felt like the public comment period, you know, was seamless in a lot of ways, given the conditions that we were working in. We made sure that hard copy, hard copies of the report were available in many places. Thrive-Ins Group conducted phone banking as well as mass texting campaigns. We did mailers, we did robocalls. The deadlines to comment were extended. And we also accepted letter submissions and hard copy comments in addition to the digital survey. One thing I want to point out about the digital survey was that due to a glitch on the website, one of the policies that we wanted people to weigh in on did not show up as its own entry point, and that was the independent youth housing policy option. We collected 50, about 50 manual surveys. 122 digital surveys were submitted through the Here to Stay portal, the website Sophia spoke about before. And then we had community-based organization letter submissions. And because those aren't, you know, individual comments or responses to the survey, we weren't able to factor the letters in in a quantitative way. But we did take into consider the um extent of reach that each letter had in terms of its impact or its its um influence among residents who would be impacted by the implementation of the policies. We also received two um corporate letter submissions, which I understand there was an additional one um sent for this specific conversation. And I'm wrapping up, but I do have a couple of examples um to show how we were able to validate the rate of response. When you hear that only two hundred people submitted a survey, maybe that sounds like a small number to you. But as a researcher um seeking out a viable sample size, when you're not able to reach, you know, the goal, which I think our goal was something around um twenty-three hundred to reach scientific significance. Um, there are other ways you can validate your survey sample um to make sure that the responses you're getting would align with um the responses you would get if the survey reached more people. And so what you see here on the screen is the the composition, the racial composition of people who responded to the survey. That's the outer circle. And the inner circle is the actual racial composition of the city based on the census data. So the only category where we saw an underrepresentation um in survey responses was the Hispanic and Latino category. And where we saw a little bit of an overrepresentation, excuse me, uh, uh, yes, an overrepresentation was um the white category. So um those two categories tend to be in flux in data anyway because the difference between Hispanic and white gets debated a lot. Um, but we didn't feel, based on looking at this racial composition breakdown, we didn't feel that um those variances were enough to invalidate um the the data that we had collected. This is also the gender breakdown, which um uh tracks with what you would typically get on a survey, any survey effort. You are likely to see majority women respond. Um, but what we thought was really powerful were the number of people responding who were gender non-conforming, non-binary or identified as transgender. Folks who usually don't um show up significantly enough to even show up in the data at all. Um, so that was another sign that our engagement efforts were reaching people who would be impacted by the work. Um, similarly with age. So this was the age di- distribution. Uh, you will also, this is tracks with ser- typical survey efforts. We had an overrepresentation of people between the ages of forty-five and fifty-four. We actually think that aligns with the overrepresentation of people who identified as white on the survey um because of the socioeconomic um privilege that white people have to tend to have, not in, not all white people, but white folks um statistically tend to be able to access um the type of free time it will will require to take a sixty-question survey. Um, and so forty-five to fifty-four is reflective of that, that over over sample of that. We also um did not seek out anyone under eighteen to take the survey intentionally, but um they also showed up, which was cool to see. And then the last thing um that was a question that a lot of folks had was um how many of the respondents were renters versus owners? And so again, the survey response rate of renters is indicated on the outer circle where you see the majority of um respondents were renters, but it's a marginal majority and it is proportional to the uh the the distribution of renters in the city based on census data. So renters were slightly overrepresented, but again, not to an extent that that would skew the data. Um. Thirty-five percent of people who responded saying that they had experienced displacement um were displaced as a result of being evicted. Um, twenty-nine percent of folks ex- were experiencing some kind of economic hardship. I also want to flag here that violence and job inaccessible jobs were also significant factors in whether or not people in Fresno were likely to be displaced. So all of this data informs the recommend, the ultimate ranking of recommendations that were made. Um, something else that we wanted to flag that I think is is it warrants, if there are conversations about additional measures that can be taken, then taking into consideration um the specific impact that displacement is having on parents uh who are parenting children that are in school. So um an increase in mental health challenges as well as economic pressure um and the impact of uh environmental conditions are worsening um the uh inhabitability of the communities that parents live in um and causing them to be displaced at a much faster rate. Okay, so all those factors informed. This is the general ranking, right? So we counted every single um survey.
Dr. Thomas, you you sound a a bit off in the distance. Maybe readjust the microphone.
Okay. Are are you able to hear me better?
That that that's a little better, yeah.
Great. Hopefully you caught the last five minutes because I'm out of breath.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're 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 fine. We, it was just like the last sentence or two that where you went off.
Great. So this is, this is how the the policies rank, the highest ranking policies across the board of all respondents. So without any age analysis, racial analysis, these were the top policies. Um, when we looked at the policies um being selected by people who had experienced displacement within the last, I believe, five years, those policy preferences shifted slightly. Um, and we saw policies like the Land Trust and Fair Chance Housing rank much higher. Um. So we did receive responses to the um survey that were adverse to the recommendations being made. Um, and that of those responses, um there were like four percent of all respondents just generally disagreed. Um, and then there were four percent of respondents who had a specific challenge with rent control. Um, two point four percent had an issue with moratoriums on encampment sweeps. And then the um cargo slash freight tax um policy was um not favored by one point six percent. So this is the final um summary of recommendations. And the only other thing that I want to point out here is that um I've heard some folks say, oh, we're already implementing several of these, so we don't need to consider them. And um these recommendations are based on our analysis of the current state of housing in Fresno. So despite versions of these policies, some of them um existing uh as components of other policies or or in their early stages, we did not find, in in cases where you're seeing us recommend policies that are already underway, uh it's because we did not find that the implementation of the policies um was consistent with um the full spirit in which the policies are conceptualized. So um that is a quick overview, but as Sophia stated, we'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. As I noted earlier, uh we're going to do both presentations, then hear from the public, and then we'll circle back um with the presenters uh for questions. Uh, so that'll conclude the uh the first item, the workshop on the Here to Stay report. Um, next up, we'll have the workshop on the One Fresno Housing Plan. And I see the mayor headed on up here to do it himself, I guess.
No, no, you you won't be. Trust me, you won't. But I will do the intro- introduction, so uh thank you, council. It's a great opportunity for us today, part of my administration, to be able to present this uh very, very comprehensive uh One Fresno Housing Strategy. And I wanted to begin before uh Deputy Mayor Matthew Grundy comes up, by way of introduction, uh to talk about what drove this uh from my perspective. And it all begins with the vision we have to be an inclusive, prosperous, beautiful city where people take pride in their neighborhood and their community, a government that listens, keeps its promises and is owned by the people. And so that vision, the first word, inclusive, is what drove this this housing plan. And we believe in inclusive opportunities for people to be successful and prosperous. There's two phases of that, or two parts. One is certainly people to be able to afford, uh and that is as oftentimes because uh in on our city, because they're not paid a livable wage. And so the economic development piece is very, very real. We're not touching on that in this report. We're touching on the second piece was housing opportunities. And that uh, as you know, began with our most vulnerable population, uh our homeless. Uh, we recognized the urgent need this last year uh was what prompted Project Off-Ramp over the last sixteen months, beginning on our freeways. We were able to take those six, a hundred and fifty people living on our freeways and the vast majority of them to find housing for them, albeit emergency shelter, but ultimately transitional housing. And that was thanks to funding that we had received from the state government. Uh, but we also recognized that there was a need uh for more of a medium-term plan over the next three to four years uh that would allow for us to have the sufficient housing in Fresno to give people the opportunity to live, to have a roof over their head. And that's both affordable housing and market rate housing. And so in January of twenty twenty-two, I assembled a a team, a a committee that would look at these issues. Um, proud to say the 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 committee was comprised of Councilmember Brettafield, uh Councilmember Arius and Councilmember Soria and members of their staff. And the um committee was headed up by Deputy Mayor Matthew Grundy, who has had experience in this in the past, having developed a national housing strategy for Habitat for Humanity, uh which he was the former CEO here locally, as you know. So Matthew did an incredible job, and as you read through the report, you will understand how in-depth this report is. Uh, he was assisted by Tyrone Williams, uh the Executive Director for the Housing Authority, uh who uh has been a breath of fresh air to Fresno. Also, uh Planning Development Director Jennifer Clark, who um has an incredible knowledge and experience uh and vast expertise in housing. And also uh Assistant Director Phil Sky, who oversees our housing in Fresno. And uh they were the ones that uh that met with us and directed us and provided data. Much of that's in the report, if not all of it. But we met on a weekly basis, ultimately providing this uh this uh One Fresno Fiscal Year twenty through twenty-five, twenty-three through twenty-five housing strategy. Very comprehensive. It looks at national, state and local uh uh issues dealing with housing, uh the current housing needs that we have in Fresno, uh the types of housing that we currently have and what we do need uh in terms of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, uh tiny homes, affordable housing, market rate, et cetera, and various income levels of folks within our community in order to determine what the affordability um uh rates were for those those people. Uh ultimately, uh there were forty-seven policy recommendations that were developed uh as well as funding recommendations for those policies were applicable. And um and also, uh we identified how many units could be developed or preserved as a result of each one of those policy recommendations. You'll see that there's a significant amount of dollars that is needed over the period of this uh three to four years, uh upwards of two hundred and fifty-nine, two hundred and sixty million dollars. However, that does, uh I don't want that to be something that scares people away because quite frankly, it's very doable. Uh, and that includes money that we already have um that is existing for, to assist us with housing needs as well as some future funding, and we identify where that source may be. And I'll just tell you, this week I was in Sacramento, meeting with the governor and legislators with the big thirteen-city mayors. Uh, we've asked them, just for our homeless efforts alone, three billion dollars for the thirteen cities over three years, so a billion dollars a year. Uh, that is how we got the first Home Key uh tranche of money and HAP dollars and HEAP dollars. And now we're asking for that dollar, those dollars to be given to us in HAP funds. It's very, very flexible, and I'm very confident we're going to get uh those dollars. Whether it's three million or two, or three billion or two billion, we will receive those. And that is a part of mentioned in the report. And there's also uh some other uh federal dollars that are out there, state dollars for housing. Some of those are competitive, some are not, and I anticipate us getting our fair share. With that, I want to introduce, uh we we have a number of folks who are going to present, and they're going to be very succinct, go through a a slide presentation for you. Uh, and it will begin with Deputy Mayor Matthew Grundy, followed by our Planning Development Director Jennifer Clark, and then followed by uh Phil Sky, and then H. Spies, who oversees our homeless efforts, will uh will conclude. And then we'll be open to any uh questions that you might have. So with that, again, let me compliment the team, but especially Matthew Grundy, who has done yeoman's work on this project, and uh he deserves, quite frankly, a round of applause by everybody for his efforts on this. And I want to say thank you to Matthew for what you've done and the sacrifices you've made, even while on vacation, working around the clock uh on this. And I literally, uh sometimes starting at eight in the morning and finishing the next morning on writing. So Matthew, thank you.
All right, four presenters, very, very uh succinct, I hope. Welcome, Deputy Mayor.
Very succinct indeed. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members, uh staff and public, for those who are tuning in. Just really appreciate you taking time for today's meeting. Um, you know, I I think to start, Brianna, I'm going to have to ask you, because this thing's not going. I'll ask you to, yeah, still no dice. So I'll probably ask you to just flip, I'll ask you to go through them for me. Um, we'll s- we'll go to the next slide. I I think I'll start with a little bit of uh context. Um, um, there, there it's working now. The mayor mentioned, you know, we have a vision for One Fresno. And the first priority, mayor priority, is focused on housing and homelessness. I want to give just a little bit of context around what is at the center of this strategy. Um, bit of a personal story and then some context uh related to this strategy. Um, I think at the heart of the strategy, it's about people, people. Um, I think every person has been impacted uh by safe, decent housing um in one way or another. And for me, uh a bit of, just a really quick bit of my story, um, you know, years ago, life happened where mom was diagnosed terminally ill and dad lost his job, and we went poor keeping mom going. And and as a result, we wound up homeless my junior and senior year in high school. And I think that experience, um experiencing the lack of 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 good housing really be- began to light a flame, uh that became a fire that ultimately, you know, I learned that oftentimes our experiences with housing, our mess becomes our message. And for me, as mayor mentioned, uh going over to Habitat for Humanity, one of the things I learned um was that when you're dealing with complex issues, this is a project, Councilmember Arius just stepped out for a second, but this is a project that we worked on on the corner of Amador and B Street. And what you'll see there in that picture, you see folks of all age, all backgrounds, um uh both sides of the aisle, in agreement on one thing, that everyone deserves a decent place to call home. And and what I'll tell you is the same thing we told the team when we got started on this process is, I've done these national housing plans, and what I've seen is you may not, and we may not agree on everything, but one thing we must do, and we said this at our first meeting, we must do it together. And so that's what we did, and I'm I'm really proud of that. Um, I want to talk a little bit about what the uh local housing strategy is. But again, to echo mayor's points, I want to uh compliment each member of the committee that helped contribute towards this strategy, including Councilwoman Soria and her staff, and Councilmember Arius and his staff, and Councilmember Brettafield and his staff, and certainly the staff here at the City of Fresno. Um, we worked on this together. So what is the a local housing strategy? Not to, I want to make sure that it's very clear that this strategy is not a strategy that will override or compete with the city's housing element, which, you know, is is really important distinction. Um, a local housing strategy instead is comprehensively describes the approach a city, and in this case, City of Fresno, would take to meet its housing objectives. Very important. Often, in 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 this case, it was developed and led by the mayor's office, but often developed by the mayor's office, a local housing strategy ultimately coordinates the actions of all local government agencies and divisions that administer policies and programs affecting housing. Um, really important to to call that out. Uh, when accepted and executed in in terms of this plan, we believe as an administration firmly that this strategy can serve as a powerful tool and roadmap that will help us make significant progress towards addressing Fresno's housing and unhoused population challenges. Notice, it does not say that this this strategy will completely remedy our city's housing challenge. That would, that would be irresponsible of us to to propose. Um, instead, we have a responsible plan that will make a significant dent in our city's housing and unhoused challenges. Um, it, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out overnight, but we think we can make significant, responsible progress. we can make significant, responsible progress. In terms of the one Fresno housing strategy, just want to share a little bit, echo some things the mayor said. We started in January of 2022. Mayor mentioned the key folks that were part of the primary committee, and we solicited direct input from for- and not-for-profit developers, housing advocates, and other individuals. That's really important. But what's more important probably is that this ninety-four-page document plus an appendix actually is built on the voices of over three thousand Fresnans who've provided input that was captured in various reports over the last decade. That's really important. We didn't want to have to reinvent the wheel. We've heard, our public has been so wonderful at showing up to council meetings and participating in public comment processes for reports, including, but not limited to, the Fresno's 2021, 2022 Annual Action Plan, Evicted in Fresno Report, Downtown Neighborhoods Community Plan, Drives Efforts, the Valley Infill Report, the Here to Stay Report, which we just heard about, 2020 Impediments to Fair Housing, Southwest Pacific Plan, Street to Home Report, and on and on and on. So I want to make sure that we underscore that while we're beginning the unveiling of the strategy, this is framed, the very backbone of this is framed on input that we've collected from the public over the past decade. As I continue on, I want to dive into some context regarding the state of housing briefly. So we're all on the same page. This is called out in the report, and so I'm summarizing. But nationally, according to the American Community Survey in 2019, which was pre-pandemic, one out of three households in the U.S. were cost-burdened. It's an important thing to note, because we're not alone. Our challenges housing-wise and affordable housing-wise are not unique to Fresno. We are not dissimilar from other cities all across the nation. Since 2019, though, which we know was a lifetime ago, during the pandemic and post-pandemic, home prices have spiked nationally by thirty percent, over eighty thousand dollars for a typical home, while housing inventory has declined to under one million units available for sale, according to the National Association of Realtors. That's really, that's really important to draw national conclusions from what we're seeing and how it's impacting us locally. In terms of the state of California, this is, we're going to start fifty thousand foot and zero in down here to Fresno, but one out of three in the state of California are currently severely rent-burdened. Rent burden means you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on your shelter. Severely rent burden means you're spending more than fifty percent of your income on shelter. When you're spending more than fifty percent of your income on your housing, you're making some tough decisions. Housing or food, housing or healthcare, decisions no Fresnoan, certainly no American, should have to make. In the final quarter of 2021, the median price California home was seven-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand four-hundred-seventy dollars. At this price, only one in four Californians can currently afford to purchase a median-priced single-family detached home. Again, I think this is important to underscore, considering the state of our state. The next thing that's really important to mention, again, just calling out some of what we're seeing statewide. HCD recently put out a statewide housing assessment through 2025. What they intend to do is showcase the challenges and opportunities in our state related to housing. In that report, they stated, and you see it up here on the graphic, that our state must produce a hundred-and-eighty thousand new units annually to meet demand. Unfortunately, for the last decade, California has averaged under eighty thousand homes annually. So at our current rate and pace, our production projections forecast to land us in 2025 with one-point-eight million, one-point-eight million housing units short of our need. When we're talking one-point-eight housing units, we're no longer talking housing or affordable housing, we're talking a shelter issue. And so that's what we're grappling with at our state. In terms of here in Fresno, our local prices for our two-bedroom rentals, as we know, and we've heard a lot about, have shot up nearly twenty-seven percent, and we're among the top ten highest increases in the nation from January 2021 to January 2022. As of January 2022, rental prices in Fresno for a one-bedroom apartment have increased to a median of fourteen hundred dollars a month, and a two-bedroom, an average of seventeen hundred a month. This has led to a sixty percent of Fresno renter households currently being cost-burdened, sixty percent. In terms of ownership housing, as a-
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
That's a very fancy terminology for the layman's terms and the rest of us. Can you explain what that means to be rent-burdened?
Yeah, yeah, sure, Councilmember Arias. Yeah, as I was mentioning, you know, rent burden means you're spending more than thirty percent of your income on your housing costs. And severely rent burden means you're spending over fifty percent. So again, those are, those are really tough numbers to grapple with, but that's the reality of the rent burden. Thank you for-
I just think it's important for people to sit on that. So for those who advocate, you know, one way or the other, if your household is paying the majority of their money on rent, you don't have extra money for landscaping, you don't have extra money for, you know, putting away for retirement, for a whole bunch of basic living and net necessities. So I want those who have financial interest in the housing market in Fresno to imagine that they were spending more than half of their income on just paying their rent before you get to the utility bills that are increasing every day, before you get to the gas at the pump that's increasing every day. So let's be very thoughtful as, as we're having this conversation.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Arias. And, you know, to that point, I'll add, as Jennifer gets ready to come up, you know, nationally, one thing that's worth noting is sixty-four percent of households nationally are actually homeowner households. It's the converse here in Fresno, over sixty percent are actually renter households. So we have a, we have a swap, if you will, and a mismatch here in Fresno with what's the national norm. In terms of ownership housing, as of February 2022, home prices here in Fresno were up twenty-point-two percent compared to last year, selling for a median price of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars per unit. While we boast often, you know, that we are affordable relative to the rest of the state, that number is alarming. And according to L.A. Times, you see here, it's last year, the headline was Fresno's the hot, one of the hottest housing markets in the U.S. So this is all context, I think, we want to provide, starting at the national level, going down to the state, now here to Fresno, and to provide greater insight into unique Fresno needs in terms of housing and housing affordability. I want to introduce Jennifer Clark.
As Matthew said, we're going to dive into Fresno-specific information. I think that as we talk about our market and understand how we got where we are today, it's going to be really important for us to hear the story of the data and what it is telling us. Over the past two decades, the City of Fresno has seen strong, steady population growth. The twenty-year growth rate has averaged one-point-two percent population increase per year, in comparison to the national average of only point-eight percent per year over that same period. From 2010 to 2020, our local population grew a total of eight-point-nine percent, while the nation grew seven-point-four percent. But population growth alone does not tell the whole story. During those two decades, the city added approximately thirty thousand housing units. In the graph shown here, light purple represents single-family production and dark purple represents multifamily production. And while population growth has been strong and steady, our housing unit production has been uneven following the economic cycle. While the population grew from 2010 to 2020, housing unit production lagged behind, adding another only six-point-six percent of units to the city's supply. This first metric simply shows that supply is less than demand, but again, doesn't tell the whole story of the housing shortage and the affordability gap. The City of Fresno now not only has a shortage of affordable units, but a mismatch of housing product compared to our community need. And once we learned this, we wanted to know more. So we started to look at identifying our markets. Who are our markets? What is our market? What does it look like, and how does it compare to our supply of housing here today? The City of Fresno contains a rich diversity of households. It's one of the best things about Fresno. The best way to learn more about our households and to, and their needs was to dive in to evaluate our, who our market represents. A market segmentation report and study can break down populations into different cohorts which identify unique characteristics and market profiles of households. The City of Fresno has access to the ESRI Tapestry Segmentation Report, and it is one of those evaluations that provides the data and the analysis contained in it. The other great thing for us about Tapestry was that it uses the same demographic information as the American Community Survey produced by the Census Bureau, which is readily available. And it helps us identify existing market resources, such as size, type, and price of housing. There are fourteen life modes in the ESRI Tapestry Segmentation Report. Of the fourteen, the City of Fresno has ten, which at least one percent of the population fit into. But the five dominant segments in Fresno represent the majority, or seventy-five percent of our Fresno households. This chart shows the proportions of each segment, which are more fully discussed in the report itself. Layering the market resources found in the American Community Survey and the life mode segmentation in Tapestry, we identified strong dissonance between what exists in the market today and our households. This mismatch has created some of the housing cost and availability shortages we face today, but again, is not the whole story. We wanted to know more about our households and where we find a mismatch between supply and demand. And one of the factors we evaluated was household income in comparison to housing costs. We can start to see that our housing costs do not match our household's income, and this ties directly to affordability, as Matthew mentioned previously. And in the strategy, we've grouped households by income and assigned affordability ranges based on a maximum housing cost of thirty percent. We use thirty percent as a maximum because a household is considered to be cost-burdened if it pays more than thirty percent of its income for housing costs. For example, in this chart, twenty percent of the households in Fresno earn less than twenty thousand dollars a year. But only eleven percent of the housing units fall into an affordable range for those households, or no more than five hundred dollars per month for entire housing costs. So that's rent plus utilities, your housing cost. This means that households must pay more than they can afford. This gap forces households out of their income affordability along the continuum, creating pressure in each income group. At this point, it's important to note that there is no one data source that can show us exactly who pays what for housing, and whether that is an affordable cost to that specific household. But we do know how many households are in certain income groups, and how many households, housing units are in our market at certain price ranges. It also, it is also important to note that the most uniform data comes from pre-pandemic studies. Let me repeat that. The most uniform data comes from pre-pandemic studies, so it is a reflection of our quote "normal" market conditions. However, we have seen that the pandemic has exacerbated these conditions. So since household income and costs do not line up precisely, in other words, the lowest-income households do not live in the lowest-cost units, it is difficult to accurately predict the exact need, however, we can make some assumptions. Based on income brackets, we have broken the data into these groups: extremely low-income, very low-income, low-income, moderate-income, and above-moderate-income households. To identify the number of households who have a cost burden of more than, no more than thirty, or excuse me, of thirty percent of income for each housing cost, we created housing cost brackets for each. For those households in extremely low-income group, housing costs would need to be less than five hundred dollars per month. For the very low-income group, housing costs would need to be between five hundred and eight hundred dollars per month, between eight hundred and twelve hundred and fifty dollars per month for low-income, between twelve fifty and eighteen seventy-five per month for moderate-income households, and over eighteen seventy-five per month for above-moderate. So in this chart, you can see each of those categories. This is for renters only. This chart shows the number of cost-burdened renter households in each of these groups in the magenta color. Again, this does not represent a one-for-one relationship, but the households and the market as a whole. You can see that in the extremely low-income category, there are approximately twenty-one-thousand households who spend more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. For renters, as household income increases above thirty-five thousand dollars a year, the cost burden declines sharply. However, the vast majority of renters, more than forty thousand households, earn less than thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Across the same income brackets that I just described and housing cost, cost burdening also occurs for homeowners. The cost burden remains relatively constant across incomes with an average of five thousand households at each income level spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. The chart also demonstrates that the majority here, or more than forty thousand households who own their home, make an excess of seventy-five thousand dollars a year. So renters, about equivalent number of renters below thirty-five thousand dollars a year in income, homeowners, the same number of homeowners are approximately above seventy-five thousand dollars per year. So in addition to basic number of units and number of households, we're also seeing that income of our households and cost of housing is not aligning. When we layered in the additional factor of tenancy, renter-occupied versus owner-occupied units over housing costs, we saw further misalignment. We additionally added homeless demand into the chart, and this will be discussed in later slides. Approximately forty-seven percent of our housing units are registered as rental housing stock, but we know that that is higher. As you can see, there are certain, there are certain factors which highlight the dramatic need for housing supply in specific categories. On the left in this chart is the market supply, with magenta representing owners and purple representing renters. On the right is the market demand with the same colors, excuse me, on the right is the market demand with the colors remaining the same, magenta for owners and purple for renters. When you combine these two charts, we are left with the fact that there is a mismatch between supply and demand. For an example, the demand in the five hundred-dollar to thousand-dollar-per-month range in the rental market is over seven thousand units higher than the supply. And at that rate, it is no wonder why sixty percent of Fresno renter households are cost-burdened. Additionally, the demand for moderate-income households to own a home exceeds the supply by over eight thousand units. This clearly indicates there is a cost mismatch between supply and demand for both renter and occupied, renter-occupied and owner-occupied units, but again, just a part of the story. While we continue to analyze our life modes and types of housing demand, I do not have time to review all of them today. The last set of data that I'd like to summarize today is the mismatch between unit size in our market versus demand. I stated earlier that our population has grown steadily. I did not note that the average household size is also different from the national average. The nation averages two-point-six persons per household, but Fresno averages three-point-oh-four. This means that we need larger units in our supply to serve our demand. Based on average household size, by life mode, we established a demand model that shows which units have the strongest market need. In this chart, renter units are represented on the left and owner units on the right, with pink displaying demand and purple displaying supply. There are a few key mismatches indicating that our supply does not match demand in our current market. While there are a large number of one-bedroom units in the rental market, the primary demand is in the three-bedroom size. This generally means that households are renting units which are smaller than what is needed. In summary, the supply is not meeting the demand. For mismatches in income and housing cost, to unit size, to housing types, the rich diversity of our community is not fully served by the housing options in Fresno today. And this strategy seeks to identify these specific gaps and to provide solutions. So our key takeaways from this data are that, one, there is an affordability gap, in particular for renter households earning below twenty thousand dollars per year, and secondarily for renter households earning between twenty thousand and thirty-five thousand dollars per year. Two, there is a mismatch between household size and unit size, and between market demand based on life modes and unit types in the supply. To address these needs, we will need to add or make available more than seven thousand units of affordable rental housing, in particular between five hundred and a thousand dollars per month, transition more than eight thousand units of single-family rental homes to homeownership for moderate-income households, and increase the supply of units for the unhoused in the form of ADUs, hotel-motel conversions, and SROs. And now I'll turn it back to Matthew for further review of the strategy.
So what do we do with all this data? What do we do with this information? It's really important for us to find a need and figure out how we can fill the need. And so I want to talk a little bit about our response and what is found within the str- strategy. We set out to be very clear about what the goals of the strategy would be. And the first is the strategy vision. It's basically the heart, it's saying, hey, this is what we're setting out to do. And that strategy vision goal is to develop as much quality housing as fast as possible at a price point every Fresno resident can afford. It's very simple. That's what we're after. The Housing Strategy objective aims to seek to take advantage of every housing opportunity to maximize short-term production of housing types. Again, we have an important and urgent need, and we want to take every opportunity we can in the short term. And then finally, but most importantly, the Housing Strategy goal specifically is a mouthful, so here we go, is to create an environment that leads to the three-year completion, rehabilitation, and preservation of six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six affordable and four thousand one hundred and ten market-rate units by identifying available land, vacant property, and financial resources while deploying a wide range of development partners to increase housing options across the housing spectrum throughout the city. Want to make sure that it just underscored the importance of the very specific numbers that we are seeking to achieve within this plan. Now, within the strategy itself, there are a few things I want to call out, and you've heard it a few times, but this is a three-year strategy. We focused the strategy on four areas, and you've heard it mentioned by our mayor, housing prevention, excuse me, housing preservation, housing production, preventing displacement, and promoting equity. A lot of Ps, but those four were key. We have outlined forty-seven priority recommendations within the affordable housing component of the strategy. It's really important that we note that the priorities specifically call out alignment at the, between our recommendations and HUD's House America priorities, California's statewide housing objectives, the city of Fresno's local housing element, and local studies and reports produced by outside agencies, some of which we've discussed already. So we wanted to make sure that we drew a clear line between which one of our recommendations aligned with things from the national, state, and local level. The plan calls, at least on the affordable housing side, calls for an investment of one-hundred-and-one million dollars, six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, to address our housing challenges across those three years. And with, with that investment, we anticipate yielding six, four thousand six hundred and ninety-five affordable units and four thousand one hundred and ten market-rate units. Now, if you heard the previous slide where I talked about the objective being over six thousand houses, you'll hear the balance of that when we talk about the shelter options to house the unhoused in subsequent slides. But on the affordable housing side, those are the metrics, the outputs. We will also, by virtue of deploying these forty-seven recommendations, create an environment that's conducive to responsibly transitioning single-family rental housing product to ownership product, as you heard from Director Clark, in terms of that need to balance our housing market. And then last, but again, perhaps most important, because people are at the core of this plan, is that we will support vulnerable populations through this strategy, including, but not limited to, those who are most vulnerable by age, race, income, et cetera. With that being said, to dive a little bit more into the details of these forty-seven recommendations on the affordable housing component of the strategy, I'm going to turn things over to Assistant Director Phil Skye.
As Deputy Mayor Grundy just covered, the One Fresno Housing Strategy affordable housing recommendations are made up of forty-seven priority recommendations. Hundred and one million dollars in investment that would lead to, we project, nearly forty-seven-hundred new affordable housing units in our city. This level of production based upon this level of investment is a hundred and sixty-seven percent increase in affordable housing production. This is significant. When you seek to evaluate the value of a one-hundred-and-one-million-dollar investment, one way to do that is to compare it to the California Tax Allocation, excuse me, Tax Credit Allocation Committee, which administers the federal and state low-income housing tax credit program, which is one of the most significant investable dollars in our community that is resulting in affordable housing. And when you take a look at the One Fresno Housing Strategy's one-hundred-and-one-million-dollar investment and compare it to C-TAC's investment, for every ten million dollars that C-TAC invests, and did so last year, they produce three hundred and twenty-six new affordable housing units. The One Fresno Housing Strategy, for every ten million dollars that we propose would be invested in this strategy and these forty-seven priority recommendations, we would produce four hundred and seventy affordable housing units. More than a hundred and fifty, nearly a hundred and fifty more units for every ten million dollars that we would invest at the local level. As Deputy Mayor said, there are four buckets that make up these forty-seven priority recommendations. I want to say a quick word about the recommendations in each bucket. First of all, it is important to note that the number of priorities, or to say it this way, where you will see a greater number or a lesser number of recommended priorities per bucket, it does not represent, it's not to be equated with, the weighted value of the committee for the buckets themselves. Rather, the committee brought forward what they believe to be the most effective, important, mission-critical priority recommendations. In some instances, it was appropriate to make five priority recommendations for that particular bucket. In other instances, the committee thought it was most important and critical to recommend additional priorities. I also want to mention that not all of the priorities in the One Fresno Housing Strategy require additional funding in order to be implemented and to have an impact. The first bucket, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, is preventing displacement. In the One Fresno Housing Strategy, the level of funding investment required to implement all five priority recommendations is north of nine hundred thousand dollars. Again, I want to remind you that not every priority recommendation requires a financial investment in order to have an impact. Just a couple of highlights per bucket, if you will, but all of the recommendations are in the strategy itself. One is eviction protection, that we would invest in an existing eviction protection program. And another is Emergency Rental Assistant Program, to seek additional funding to continue the critical emergency rental programming. The next bucket is preserving affordable housing. There are two recommended priorities in the One Fresno Housing Strategy. The highlights for these two priorities are funding housing rehabilitation programs for seniors so that they can age in place. Another is to create an R3 loan fund, which restores, rehabilitates, and revitalizes naturally occurring affordable housing in partnership with organizations in our community. The third bucket is producing affordable housing. The One Fresno Housing Strategy, this reflects or represents twenty-eight priorities and more than ninety-six million dollars of investment. Some highlights from the twenty-eight priorities that are in the One Fresno Housing Strategy are establishing a land bank to capture underutilized property throughout Fresno and use it explicitly for affordable housing. To invest in a local trust, or there are a couple of local trust models here in the community, to ensure long-term affordability in neighborhoods. Establish a Section 108 loan. Incentivize affordable housing development. Our community has a robust and capable affordable housing development community. We currently partner with that community by investing in projects that they bring to the city. The One Fresno Housing Strategy recommends that we continue to do that and even increase our investment. Lastly, one final highlight from the production bucket is the development of accessory dwelling units, partnering with Fresno City College, partnering with local community benefit organizations, partnering with local ADU builders, and ultimately locating ADUs on private property. The final bucket is promoting equity. There are twelve priorities in the One Fresno Housing Strategy that represent a one-million-dollar investment. Some of the highlights from that bucket that you will find spelled out in their entirety in the One Fresno Housing Strategy are rent stabilization, incentivizing landlords in exchange for affordability covenants, establishing open Fresno, which would utilize platforms to provide full access to data and to plans, seeking California's pro-housing designation to capture incentives for housing, community development, and infrastructure projects. And lastly, ensure that we have a down payment assistance program that is substantial enough to help as many Fresnans afford homeownership. I'd now like to introduce H. Spees, the Director of Housing and Homeless Initiatives, to present on the twenty-four recommended priorities of the One Fresno Housing Strategy that will help house the unhoused. H.
Counsel, let's talk about housing the unhoused. And this really does go back to Deputy Mayor Grundy's comment that this is all about people. And aren't our hearts continued to be broken by the situation on our streets where we have hundreds of unhoused individuals? This strategy addresses and takes seriously the challenge of our unhoused population. It's a three-year plan. The plan aims to reduce Fresno's family homelessness by thirty-five percent and single-adult homelessness by twenty percent by June of 2024, while maintaining a safe exit rate of above fifty percent in ninety to a hundred and twenty days from our shelter and triage centers. There are twenty-four priority recommendations that are made, and these priorities specify, specifically align with HUD's California states and the city of Fresno's local housing plans and elements and guidelines, as well as local studies and reports that have been produced by outside agencies. It calls for an investment of up to one-hundred-and-fifty-three million to address the unhoused in our community. The only way to strategically think about this is in terms of a continuum, because our goal is not to produce cul-de-sacs, but to produce a pipeline from the streets so that people can get into permanent housing long-term. And that pipeline begins with the state of homelessness itself, a robust street response that's compassionate and strategic, moving to prevention, as folks are encountered on the streets, or more significantly, as folks are encountered teetering on the edge of the abyss and, and with few resources can be maintained in their current housing situation, how to prevent homelessness from happening, onto emergency shelter, triage centers, and then safe exits and transitional housing, affordable housing, rental housing, and affordable homeownership. Those areas in the green are the areas that have been addressed primarily by this, the first section of this report dealing with housing, and, and so they don't show significantly on this pie chart. But if you look up at rental and homeownership and safe exits, those are some of the options that are being, that the investments that have been mentioned earlier in this report advance. We're looking at significant investments in all of those areas of the continuum, including triage centers, safe exits, rental and homeownership, street response, homeless prevention, and emergency shelter. These investments between 2023 and 2025 look like this. In terms of street response, continued development of the HART team, a shelter housing fund that actually is similar to a fund that would be like an endowment, that would build resources that could be drawn upon to provide operations in our shelter housing without drawing upon the general fund, a HOPE project for students between eighteen and twenty-four. On the prevention side, we have diversion strategies and preserving the affordable housing that we do have. In terms of emergency shelter, we're recommending sleeping cabin villages, an increased capacity and sustainability of longstanding community shelter assets. We all know that the huge amounts of public resources that are being channeled towards homelessness in our communities and throughout the state may not be sustainable. And so using those resources to build up our community-owned assets, like Pavarello House, Fresno Mission, Marjorie Mason Center, Evangel Home, and others, are really critical. Building triage centers, that was an innovation that has happened in the last couple of years, an increase, increasing housing for domestic violence victims, right sizing and sustaining family shelters, right sizing and sustaining triage centers, and then acquiring additional motels for shelter. Related to safe exits, we're looking at preserving and increasing permanent supportive housing. That's that housing, that specialized housing, perhaps the most expensive type of housing on this continuum, that addresses those who have been chronically homeless or chronically mentally ill, and has built into it a significant support system. But also increasing rapid rehousing, converting triage centers to bridge housing, encouraging shared housing, congregate living, increasing sober-living residences, worker dorms, and independent living. And in terms of rental, rental and homeownership that's affordable, looking at ADUs for safe exits. The Fresno Mission Urban Housing Initiatives could produce as much as a thousand beds in the next several years. Converting former motels that are now shelters to affordable housing, increasing landlord recruitment, engagement, and mitigation funds, supporting affordable homeownership through tiny home condos and ADUs, and then, of course, investing in our critical community-based organizations that are doing, that are providing for affordable housing in terms of homeownership, and that's self-help housing and Habitat for Humanity. With that, I'd like to turn it over to, return the mic to Deputy Mayor Matthew Grundy.
All right, I'm going to bring us home. I want to talk just briefly about next steps and what we're suggesting, if it pleases the council. Our next steps would be essentially to draft a work plan with the staff. So to take these recommendations and say, based on the recommendations and timelines associated, we would like to begin bringing forward policy, working with you and your offices on policy recommendations, funding recommendations, code modifications where applicable at subsequent council meetings. And then, I'm a firm believer, if you're not measuring it, you're not managing it. And so we want to make sure that we're putting in place robust tracking and benchmarking tools to make sure that we're tracking on those items in which we bring forward and that are approved by council. And so what you're seeing there actually is, is a sample of what, a system we've actually built out in, with ISD, that will actually track each of these elements that we found to be needs within our community and our progress towards meeting those affordable housing goals. And it would be updated and accessible to all in real time. I just want to end by saying what I, what I led with, that we've got to do this together. It takes each one of us. I want to thank our mayor and his vision. At the core of his vision is the thought that- At the core of his vision is the thought that every person in this community matters. And I want to thank his bravery and his, you know, and us being able to produce at his leadership, this once in a, really a generation plan. And then I want to thank each one of you, council members and your staff, for your participation, for leading some of these efforts that we're now kind of throw gasoline on. I want to thank you individually for those. And I want to thank staff for all their expertise and wisdom and work. And I want to thank the 3,000 voices of Fresenons that contributed towards plans that stood as the backbone of the creation of this strategy. Finally, I just want to thank Council President Asparza for calling this meeting, putting it together, giving it its own time, because I know it's that important to you. And so with that, I conclude, and we conclude, our presentation on the One Fresno Housing Strategy. We're open to, I know, public. Thank you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and as well all the folks from the administration. We're going to, like I said, we've heard both presentations. Both presentations have been online and available for public consumption. So I do want to go ahead and take public comment. I see some of my colleagues punched up. We're going to go ahead and let the public speak first, and then we'll dig into it. So we'll give public comment its own time here for a bit. I do have a stack of yellow cards here given to me. If you're in the chamber and would like to speak, please remember to fill out a yellow card, hand it over to our clerk here, and they'll get it up to me. If you are on Zoom, I do see some hands that are punched up already. Feel free to raise your hand on Zoom, and I will, as I've done, alternate between the Zoom cards and the yellow cards. So I'll start here in the chamber, and we're going to go ahead and, let me see here, we have quite a few folks.
If, Council President, if I could, I did want to make an opportunity. Tyrone Williams, who's the CEO from our Housing Authority, Executive Director, he could not be here at the beginning, but he did come in during the latter part. And Tyrone did an incredible job. He was on the meetings with us every week. And those meetings, many of them were very, very long. And so I want to say thank you, Tyrone, for your commitment to this process. So thank you.
All right, so I'll have the first speaker. And what we're going to do today, clerk, we're going to do two and a half minutes. So please keep your comments to two and a half minutes or less. Comments should be with respect to housing and/or the items that we've heard here today. First speaker we have here in the chamber is going to be Kyle Lopez Schmidt. Come on down, Kyle.
Good afternoon, counsel. Kyle Lopez Schmidt, 115 North Calavera Street. I'm the founding executive director of the South Tower Trust, and I've also spent my entire career working in housing and community development, community development finance. I'm, one thing I wanted to address first was I was listed as a community contributor to this plan. And while I do appreciate being invited to one one-hour meeting with seven other organizations, I feel that being listed in that way is disingenuous to what we had in that discussion and would recommend that we really invest in having more deep conversations in that space and also want to acknowledge the people that were not invited and hold that space to make sure that people in the community that might have opposing, stronger opposing views are brought centered into that space and really wrestle with some of the things that are going to make people uncomfortable in the housing development community, such as rent control, and really dig into those issues and find out how we can make more meaningful systems change to our development process. Because if we're not doing things that make our existing developers uncomfortable with this plan, we're not changing anything. We're continuing to concentrate resources with the people that already have resources and let them make decisions for our community and how our community gets to live. The Community Land Trust model was defined in this plan, leaving out a very important aspect of community control and community governance of that process, that people in neighborhoods need to have a voice for how their communities are designed, how their communities are built, and how they live in them, because they are the ones there. So that's a really important aspect of what we need to do moving forward is not streamline development projects that are going to do harm to our community, because there's some policies in this that would do that, that housing developers are, need to be forced sometimes to have community involvement. And that's not a negative thing, and it might slow down the process, but it's a really important part of our neighbors feeling like their neighborhoods are theirs and not there to be profited on. Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Next, we're going to have Brandy Nuskegas. Brandy?
Thank you. I am asking that the here-to-stay recommendations be approved when you, in a timely manner, exactly how they're written on the here-to-stay report. I read the mayor administration's response to these and ask that none of these be altered, watered down, or dismissed. Regarding the rental program, it's extremely poignant. With proper planning, could address legal concerns. We must protect our housing and secure from this major vulnerability. Regarding moratorium encampment suites, the dire said that they have stopped. They have not. They have continued nearly possibly every day and called cleanups. I know that you have a lot of pressure as a community, I mean, from the community about the, about encampments, but we need sustainable solutions identifying barriers to overcome and not, no displacement without proper placement of people, because otherwise they're just getting shuffled around. The community is aware of eviction protection programs, but this isn't enough to protect and meet the needs of our community, and the effective right to counsel will address that as detailed. Rent stabilization with just cause. You mentioned a voluntary program for landlords funding to access affordability covenant. We're asking for ordinance to ensure that rent is affordable for tenants while having a percentage to allow landlords to make a profit and that there is a no-just eviction. Regarding fair housing, I understand there's concerns, but again, expert guidance can help you overcome that, and we need to protect those who are on the streets, because prevention is easier than placement of those who have a record. Anti-displacement and homelessness department. I, unlike what is currently being done and presented today in that, in the plan later on, any strong department or program needs to center around giving the unhoused not only a voice, but a permanent seat of power at the table to sustainable change. What was presented for the homeless today outside of the here-to-stay report is leaving them out and, leaving people out and doing the same thing. I ask that you strongly support all of these. And last, I want to note that a lot of people were left out of this meeting because of the time. We need to have good faith that the community is going to, that the council will make room for those. There's a lot of people who are going to work, I mean, going to pick up their kids at this time. There's a lot of people who aren't here from work. We need them at the table, just like we needed for every, which is exactly what happened with the here-to-stay report, which was in the evening and got the voice. So please listen to the voice of our community and approve the here-to-stay report.
That was right on time. Okay. Next, here in the chamber, we have Don Scordino. Don, are you with us? There you are. So as a reminder to our speakers in the chamber, the first beep means you have a minute left. The two beeps means the time is up.
Okay, thank you very much, and appreciate being here. First of all, my name's Don Scordino. I'm a lifelong resident of Fresno County. I love this place. When I was in high school, we went through, we were on public assistance for a while, and so it's not like I was born rich or anything. I now have worked in the real estate business for 46 years. For 44 years, I've been a landlord. And I have found that finding the win-win, where both people win, landlord and tenant win, is what works. I have many, many tenants that have been with me for 10, 20, 25 years. And I'm proud of those people. I encourage them to buy homes, because that's how they can get rent control, by getting a 30-year fixed-rate mortgage. So that option is out there. But if we have, and don't forget that as we talk about anti-displacement, there's also, we had disruption for many years. From when I bought my first home in 1978, my first rental home, and that is my retirement income, because I don't have a 401K. There was oftentimes a disruption, not a displacement. That disruption is when somebody said, "Don, I enjoyed being here, but I'm moving to, we're going to get closer to the school district," or whatever. So, and that was a disruption, because whenever there's a turnover, there's a one- or two-month loss of income, and then rehabbing also. So no landlord really wants a vacancy. To make it work, it's win-win. You need a tenant and you need a landlord. And with a lot of the new regulations, it's making it more difficult to provide affordable housing. The compassion and the relationship in renting is almost out the window. There was one time I stopped a sheriff from evicting somebody because I discovered there was something very compassionate happening in the house. And so I stopped it and started over again, and I'm proud of that. But I wouldn't do that nowadays, because there's so many regulations that you would just have to go on. So I think that's my two and a half.
Yes, it is, sir.
All right, thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to move over to Zoom, grab a few folks on Zoom. So first on Zoom, with their hand raised, we have Crystal Reed.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, Crystal, welcome. You have two and a half minutes.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Crystal Reed. I'm with A Plus Property Management. I've been in the rental industry for about 15 years and about 20 years total in the real estate market. I've seen the impact over the past few years of the COVID problems and just the unsteadiness of our rental market. There's not enough housing. There's not, there's more tenants than there's available housing for renting. Basically, we have more people on rent than they do buying homes. And the people that own these rental homes are getting out of Dodge because of the policies and procedures that are going on with our rental market with, with all of the criteria that you have to follow. Now, a lot of these people, they're just selling their homes or selling them for a great profit, but they're not reinvesting here back in Fresno. They're reinvesting either in other type of investments or out of state. So our dollars that they've created here are just leaving our state altogether and in essence, leaving Fresno. With the program of AB 1482, our state has already done its best on rent control and rent caps and everything like that to allow our growing rent increases at a stable rate to allow for owners to recoup costs to keep basically their property going and be able to help with the increase of property taxes and all the other taxes that feed the City of Fresno. And right now, with the increase of population, right now, from census to census for the City of Fresno, there's been a 9% increase in population. So let me break that down in layman's terms. You have over 100,000 people, you have 9,000 people coming to live in Fresno. So from our last census week and population count, we had 525,010 people. So that is at 9%, that is a total of 47,250 people coming to live in Fresno.
Crystal, your two and a half minutes has passed. If you could give your final thought, we're going to move on.
Final thought is, is that no rent increases, you will hinder more developers coming to town to want to develop because of the restrictions of rent control.
All right, thank you.
Rent control cannot happen.
Next on Zoom, we're going to have Adam Goldfarb.
Thank you. My name is Adam Goldfarb, and this year I am the California Apartment Association's State Board President. Also run Manco Abbott in Fresno. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Apartment Association's position at the state and local level, and it has always been one for more production in any kind of market in which it's needed, whether it's affordable housing, market-rate housing, whatever it is. If the demand is there for more housing, that's what we want. Further, rent control in the state hasn't worked. You can look at San Francisco and Los Angeles, they're great examples. Further, AB 1482 passed a couple of years ago, and that is statewide rent control. And any community that's over 15 years old is subsequent to that and adheres by those laws. So it is in effect. Lastly, I just want to say that the Apartment Association looks forward to working with the city on all practical, sustainable solutions to ensure everyone has a place to call home. That's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, next on Zoom, we're going to have Alicia Diaz. Alicia, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you have two and a half minutes. Alicia? All right, clerk, we can maybe circle back if they raise their hand again. Let's move on to Dave, just Dave, doesn't give a last name. Dave, please unmute yourself, and you have two and a half minutes. Dave, it is your turn to speak on Zoom. Okay, clerk, we'll circle back again. Next speaker on Zoom, Chris Ann Darling. Would you like to unmute yourself? You have two and a half minutes to speak. Chris?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you have two and a half minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of add in my portion about the, what's happening to the mom and pops, so to speak. I manage a property management company. I deal mostly with single-family homes. Most of my owners own one rental. They rely on the income every month. They have, it's this whole thing with not paying rent and not being able to evict and getting the ERA funds, the Emergency Rental Assistant Funds, have put some of my owners in dire straits. I have one owner that she had to dip into her savings just to pay the mortgage, taxes, and insurance, and she's pretty much out, almost out of money. And they keep extending the Emergency Rental Assistance. Now, my understanding is it's going through September. And what I want to know is how are we helping the landlords? How are we helping the owners? Because I don't, I don't see it happening, and it's, and it's not right. I'm not talking about the owners or companies that have 10, 20 properties. I'm talking about the smaller, smaller mom and pops who rely on this to live. And then, and then with rent control, you, you're, it's going to have exactly the opposite effect from what everyone thinks it's going to have. If my, if my mom and pop owner can't raise their rent, well, you know yourself, mortgage or taxes go up, insurance goes up, everything goes up. But if they can't raise the rent on their property, they're just going to sell it. In fact, that's what a lot of people are going to do. They're just going to sell their property. And now they can finally sell it for more than they paid for it or more than they owe on it. And that's why, part of reason why there's so few rentals out there. There's just, obviously, you guys have said it, there's, there's way more demand than supply. But I think these laws that they're trying to instigate are causing the problem, cause, going to cause more problem than not. I think it's going to have exactly I think it's going to have exactly the opposite effect of what everyone wants.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, we're going to come back over to the chamber now for a few cards. Uh, next we have Nicholas Wildstar.
Hello, hello. My name is Nicholas Wildstar. I am running against Miguel Arias for City Council. Um, I just wanted to quickly remind everybody here in attendance, online as well as in person. We do have an election coming up, so if you don't like the performance of-
Mr. Wildstar, keep it relevant to housing.
I am. I, if you don't have any, if you don't like the performance of this council or any representative, please vote them out, okay? With regards to the housing plan, while the mayor's plan is comprehensive, it excludes people of the public, which is why they're getting pushback. So with all due respect to the deputy mayor, um, it's a bit arrogant to say, we've heard from you over the past 10 years, we've heard enough and we're going to move forward with these plans. It's also a bit asinine to present a plan for people to buy homes when they can barely afford to pay rent. Also, the plan says that you're going to increase taxpayers, what the amount of money taxpayers in Fresno are paying up to a hundred million dollars over the next three years when they again can barely pay rent. So how can you present a plan that promotes them to buy homes? But I'll keep my opinion there. That's why I think the councils should vote against this government boondoggle, which it sounds like. But I was also asked to read a statement by fellow affordable housing advocates. This is an official joint statement. It reads as follows. "We have stood before the council a few times in solidarity with the advocates within the housing community as advocates in our own personal fights for the mitigation and furthermore, ending of mass incarceration and gun violence. Displacement, underfunding, public housing, and inadequate access to housing resources are major components to the exasperation of these issues. When people do not have basic needs such as housing, it interferes with day-to-day activities which can in turn interfere with our mental health. People may and have become desperate and go into survival mode, increasing their potential to commit crimes. Displacement and housing vulnerability therefore are violent acts that perpetuate harm within our communities. For these reasons, we support the Here to Stay Report and urge the council to enact direct staff to create a comprehensive timeline to implement the anti-displacement tax forces recommendations for consideration at the May 16 City Council hearing." There are laws, I'm wrapping up now. There are laws in place that are taking care of access to firearms. There are programs in place that are dealing with the mitigation of gun violence through the direct intervention. What we lack and what we need is to understand the roots of the problem and to do everything within our power to fight our basic human needs. Tenants and residents of Fresno-
Thank you, Mr. Wildstar.
I'm just wrapping up now.
We've gone over now for a few seconds now. We're going to have Ms. Anadina Banda, uh, come on down as the next speaker. Anadina Banda?
Sí, estoy aquí por, por este, necesitamos ayuda por la vivienda, por las rentas que están tan caras porque-
I'm here, we need help for the rents. They're very, very expensive.
Sí, hay personas que, un hijo mío le tuvieron que, que se desaloje el apartamento porque luego tienen personas a quien se lo van a rentar más caro.
My son was evicted from his apartment because they had a, a renter that was willing to pay more rent.
Sí, y también pues se ocupa pues ahora sí vivienda para las personas que están sin hogar donde vivir porque-
We, we need housing for people who are homeless.
Porque allí la, la, el área de los apartamentos ellos buscan la forma de, de buscar dónde, dónde dormir y descomponen a los cuartitos donde tenemos la lavadoras, nos quedamos sin-
People go into the apartments where we live, they need somewhere to live and they go in there where we have the washrooms and they start staying there and they tear things up.
Sí, pues está, luego viviendo así en las banquetas, no tienen ya uno lugar por donde pasar.
Some people go down and lay down and sleep on the sidewalks and there's nowhere, nowhere to walk.
Y necesitamos también porque pues no hay mantenimiento en los apartamentos, están en muy malas condiciones.
Some apartments have not have kept, they're in very bad conditions.
Sí, pero la renta esa sí tiene que ser el día primero y si no hay muchos recargos.
The rent will be paid on the first. If not, there are fees added to it, many fees. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker in the chamber is going to be Carla Martinez. Welcome Carla, you have two and a half minutes.
Hi, good afternoon. Carla Martinez with Leadership Council and also a resident of District One. Um, I'm here to make comments today on the Here to Stay Report. People have been here for the past five months asking for the same thing, for the city council to take action, to do something. People are constantly, you know, calling me, telling me my rents are going up. Yes, AB 1482 is in place, but it is past the cap that the state has put. Folks don't know their rights, don't know what to do and they are being evicted and eventually becoming homeless, which is, I'm hearing from a lot of you, a very important issue and we don't seem to see the action from the council at all, even though folks have been here since November, December, the past couple of months, asking for the same thing and that is for the Here to Stay Report to have those policies and programs, have a timeline implemented and, and really hear from the people. You know, and we ask the city and the council to direct staff to create a comprehensive timeline to implement some of, some of these policies, including right to council, rent stabilization, conversion restrictions, fair chance housing, policies that will keep people housed and will further not place people on the streets and people can stay home. And finally, the time of day of this special meeting, while we appreciate it, it's something that we've been asking for, is not ideal. A lot of folks here had to go pick up their children at around two, could not stay for public comment. Yes, we pushed for e-comment, we pushed for that as well, but I mean, that closes 24 hours prior to, to today's meeting. And so not a lot of folks got a chance to speak here today. So, thank you to the council for your time and I really hope to see those changes and see the Here to Stay Report implemented. Um, I also do have some cards here from all of your districts, from folks who are having housing issues, are facing this housing crisis and I hope you guys get a chance to read them because they really did put their stories on here. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come back to, to Zoom. And on Zoom, we have Kimberly McCoy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kimberly McCoy, Project Director for Fresno Building Healthy Communities. As a community member, I would like to address the 1:00 PM start time for this public workshop. We know that many families who are experiencing displacement and face everyday challenges cannot make time slots in the middle of the day. I understand that with most workshops, public comments are not standard in these meetings, but we need to consider the time of day when we schedule a time for meetings that allow comments. I am also here today to demand that the Fresno City Council works towards a comprehensive solution to our housing crisis. We have done the work for you. Community members, community-based organizations and leaders have helped draft and weighed in on the Here to Stay Report and that you have had it since November 2021. The report includes recommendations like rent stabilization and a just cause eviction ordinance that will add a safety net to these uncertain times. Solutions like a homeownership and rental assistance program can add a layer of security while rents and mortgage rates continue to rise as we continue to fight this current pandemic. As reported by LA Times and the Fresno Bee, rents in Fresno are among the highest in the country. In just one year, the city of Fresno has seen several, has seen a rent increase of 28%, yet we have not created a solution to mitigate the housing crisis we have, we are already facing, a supply and a demand shortage. Why are we continuing to not provide worthwhile solutions for our community members? Why, we are a rapidly growing city and time is rapidly running out on fixing this problem. Community concerns require community solutions. We can create one healthy Fresno by adopting the Here to Stay recommendations or at the very least incorporating the top 10 policy recommendations. The time is, the time to act is now and the community has provided tangible solutions to help create healthy and affordable housing for all. Let us work together as a community to overcome our housing barriers and create one healthy Fresno. Thank you.
Next on Zoom, we're going to have Greg Trzakis.
Thank you, Council President Asparza Greg Trzakis, California Apartment Association. Pleased to be here today. Would like to comment on some of what's been said in the reports. Um, I think it is good that you've had this session today. I understand it's a time problem for some people, but I think uplifting the voices of all parties involved is, is a good thing. We have been working with the city in the six plus years I've been with CAA. We've worked on the Rental Housing Improvement Act. We've worked on increasing the fines for those violating the RHIA that was carried by Council Member R S. We have supported the eviction protection program for those people being illegally evicted. Our concern is that some of these recommendations are going to have an opposite effect. We're going to wind up having disinvestment. We're going to wind up having infill housing deserts instead of the development that we need. And I know a lot of people have referenced the Thrivers Group Report and I was part of many of those sessions. The one thing that kind of distresses me is that Dr. Thomas said that they needed a response rate of 2,300 people for quotes, scientific significance and they got 200. So, I think it's kind of a challenge to make broad policy recommendations when they didn't even reach 10% of what they needed to, to have, I would say, a comprehensive discussion. We here at CAA look forward to working with the city, tenant advocates, all stakeholders, on trying to find a way to build our way out of this issue of housing instability and, and housing costs, both at the rental level, but also at the purchase level. Because people who've been saving for the last two years to buy a house while they're renting are probably no closer to buying now than they were due to the interest rate increase and the increase of homes. And I would just like to close with a quote from Asser Lindbeck. Asser Lindbeck was economist from Sweden. He was a socialist. He passed away in 2020. And he was the chair of the committee that awarded the Nobel Prize in Economics. And he said, aside from bombing, rent control is the most effective way to destroy a city. I can't agree with that more. I hope we can build more housing. I hope we can work with the mayor and tenant advocates on getting as much built as quickly as possible. And I thank you all for your time.
Okay, so here. Next on Zoom, we're going to have Gracia Alanis.
Hi, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. My name is Gracia Alanis and I'm providing comments today not as, in the role of my Leadership Council position, but as the Vice Chair of the Anti-Displacement Task Force, which engaged in the development of the Here to Stay Report since its inception when the task force worked with city staff to develop the RFP. First, I'd like to just remind this council that the Here to Stay Report was done through a grant the city received from the Strategic Growth Council to remain compliant with its TCC grant as the original application did not include a complete displacement avoidance plan as it failed to identify the required new policies or programs to prevent residential and commercial displacement, which the, the program itself requires. It is incumbent on the city to ensure that we remain compliant with this contract, while also ensuring that public dollars that were used are properly, that were used are being used properly by not allowing this thorough report, the Here to Stay Report, to simply, you know, quote unquote, sit on a shelf. Further, I would just like to commend, commend Dr. Thomas and our team on doing a comprehensive analysis that is responsive to the concerns and problems this community raised during the entirety of this process. It is rare when you see it, you know, just generally any government agency and even less a private consulting group doing such thorough outreach, let alone in the midst of, of a pandemic, which, you know, was obviously unprecedented. As a task force member, I joined several of these workshops we hosted and appreciated the significant research they did and meaningful engagement to ensure that these recommendations were responsive to communities because, you know, during that whole process, it really consistently heard what I've been hearing through the years that not only have been working here and doing advocacy, but have lived here as, as someone who was born and raised in, in Southeast Fresno. These recommendations not only look at long-term solutions like producing more housing and creating living wages, but also more immediate solutions to address the urgent crisis that so many of our friends and neighbors and your constituents are grappling with as they struggle to keep a roof over their head. We too look forward to working with city staff, the mayor, council members, landlords, the CA, all stakeholders on this because we want to create comprehensive solutions at work that create a complete community and, and address the, the concerns of especially of our vulnerable populations because we, we cannot continue to make those headlines of Fresno being, you know, one of these hottest markets, really leaving out so many of our community members out of, out of a home essentially. Lastly, I'd like to echo some of those sentiments and note that, you know, again, the time and day of this special meeting is incredibly inaccessible for my-
Can I say, we've surpassed the two and a half minutes. Uh, thank you for your, your comments.
Thank you.
We're going to move back to the chamber now and we're going to hear from Ruben Espinoza.
Hello, good afternoon, City Council. My name is Ruben Espinoza and I am here to support the Here to Stay Report policies. I'm here to speak on, um, what we all know is that Fresno is going through a housing crisis, but I'm here to uplift a voice I feel like has been missing from this fight. And that's the voice of systems impacted youth. That's youth returning home from incarceration. Sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. As I identify with this, I categorize as a young person who has returned home from incarceration and let me tell you, it's really hard to find a place to stay. And it's really hard to find a place to be able to transition when coming home from incarceration. But our young people are trying, they're fighting, they're, they're very ambitious, they're still hopeful. You know, I'm on the ground daily with young people who are returning home from incarceration who just don't know what to do because everybody is feeling this housing crisis. The housing lists, they're filled up and the youth who have a background, they're put at the end of the list. They're discriminated against because of, you know, their limited educational background, their unestablished credit. You know, um, the, the, they have no family support. And, you know, it, it, it makes everything so much more acute and we're feeling the vices of this really bad and, you know, the, the odds are stacked against us every single step of the way. We face challenges because of the, because not just of the things that I mentioned, but we face challenges because they use that to discriminate, to discriminate against us. We need a fair chance housing policy because we need a fair chance. We have goals, we have dreams, we are as ambitious as anybody else. But just because we have a background and we have struggles does not mean that we don't deserve a roof over our head. And I'm here to say that because a lot of the youth that we work with could not be here due to all the struggles that they're going through. And it's just, it really hurts my heart to see them go through that and I really want to uplift their voice and their struggle and our struggle and everybody else here in this room and say that, um, please uplift the Here to Stay Report, please pass the policies. Fair chance housing is one of those and it really means a lot to these youth who could not be here and, and really can be here because who wants to go to a council meeting when they're really too busy trying to survive out here? And, you know, as I'm in this council meeting, I'm getting text messages about, you know, housing vouchers. What can our organization do for them? And it's, and it's hard and, you know. So just, just please take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ruben. The, we surpassed time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kayla Whittle, you want to be the next speaker? Kayla?
Hi, good, hi, City Council. Okay. Hi, I'm Kayla. I was born and raised in Fresno, California, and I still reside here. That's why it breaks my heart to see many families and people struggling emotionally from not having an income to provide for their families since the pandemic. Living in fear of becoming ill and losing those around them while also supporting those- supporting those around them in this trying time. Many have became depressed during this pandemic, many families, and people have been evicted, and some have became homeless. I noticed during the pandemic that prices have increased for essential items and also rent. The prices changed, and the, the prices changed in the times when people needed help the most to survive. I hope during this time, people would learn, would learn to value each other and gain more compassion and empathy and understanding. I ask that you guys can, because you feel nobody should have to lose everything that they have and be on the street, while also getting an eviction, which makes it hard for them to find housing later. It is many children and elderly people being forced onto the street. It just doesn't sit right with me and many people that can relate to this struggle. So I ask that you guys do the right thing to help people get, keep their housing or get their lives back. Give them some hope and a safe place to live instead of on the streets. I would also like to add, it's become hard for families with Section 8 vouchers because of the rent increase. It makes it harder to find places that would accept the vouchers. And it is a shame that everything is about money, especially when it's in the wrong places. In these time, in these times, you have to make triple the income, and it makes it hard to find housing. It's sad that money is worth more than people's well-being. Money shouldn't be worth more than people's lives. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Chris and Jalen, for speaking your behalf. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Gloria Hernandez. Gloria?
Hola, Gloria Hernandez. I'm really at odd. You know, a lot of the homeless are kids that got arrested under Dyer's administration, you know, when he did all those mass attacks on the gangs. And those are the kids that Ruben talks about, that came out of the foster care, that came out of juvenile, that aren't able to get anything because their employment is out the door because of the record. And then hearing some of my old clients tell me that Howard Spees considers them as drug and criminals, it makes me wonder what kind of a Christian man he is. And then I start thinking about how the Richmond mayor and the Rotary Club got together, and they're raising money using the mayor's foundation to pay one year's rent for families, giving them a hand up and not a foot down. So it makes me wonder, as a former police reform commissioner who voted to implement all the, that work that we did that haven't been implemented, is why are we wasting our time? You all are going to do what you all are going to do. People have worked hard, have come to you. You've had the report for a while, just like you've had the police commission recommendations for over a year. Why are we wasting our time? You're going to do what you're going to do. And the sad thing is that there's kids out there, and even though Mike accused Des of abusing them by bringing them out to the media, you all do that. Dyer goes out there and shakes hands with people he doesn't even know so that he can take a photo opportunity. I observe that. And it's sad. These are human beings who deserve to be treated with dignity and respect, who can't afford the first, last, and every time they apply the $35 credit check. None of those are being addressed. This is a legacy of Dyer. Those families, those young men, those young women that are homeless, that's his legacy. I just want it on the record. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come back to Zoom for a few speakers. We have next on Zoom, Charlene Bruett.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have been a resident in Fresno for 45 years, and I would like to think about the cause and effect of some of these things you're presenting. The fair chance housing is a very important thing. I don't think any of us want to live next door to someone that has been violent, hurt other people, caused this value to where you live, caused problems, bring other people around. I mean, this is why there is a record. So we know what kind of people we're dealing with. So we know who we live next door to. And, you know, landlords have a responsibility to make sure that we are living next door to someone that will not potentially hurt us or cause these problems. You know, we've got to look at the big picture. You take, if you take away certain tools, it doesn't protect others. I'm not a homeowner. I'm a renter as well. But I want that in place to help as a protection for myself. And then giving the right to counsel, you know, for eviction. I mean, there is legal aid in place. There are current resources that are available. But I think that some of these things will just reward people that don't do the things they're supposed to do, the ones that don't follow the rules, the ones that cause the problems. And it's not, you know, just people that are homeless that are in need, you know, those of us that may not be displaced. We need a good community as well. I mean, even a homeless shelter will disallow someone that doesn't follow the rules, plain and simple. They won't let them back in, or if they don't come at a certain time, they're not allowed to come in. I mean, there has to be rules in place. They're for a reason. You know, as far as rent control, I mean, I know that a lot of people can't afford the increasing prices ongoing. But again, we have to look at the other side. What if the people that are asking for these things were the homeowner and weren't able to take all their hard work for all those years, and they invest in something, and now they're being told what they can and cannot do with their property? You know, we are in a capitalist society, and this is the way our society works. I would love to help the people that are in need, but I just think we need to look at a greater view and see what is cause and effect, because fixing on one side can make an unbalance and long-term cause more problems in the future. Thank you.
Okay, next on Zoom, we're going to have Lisa Flores.
Good afternoon. Very, two very distinct previous speakers, one who spoke, spoke from her heart about what's really happening in the world, and another with a disillusion. First off, I want to talk about the Here to Stay Report real quick. I came to you more than two years ago, when the pandemic was starting, and told you you needed rent control, rent stabilization, whatever you want to call it, you needed. You still needed it. You needed it two years ago. You needed it a year ago. You needed it six months ago. You still need it. You need to fix the current problem that's here in Fresno. Whether it, you invoked it for five years, 10 years, six months, it needs to happen to stabilize Fresno. That is the number one thing you need to do, because that will also help you in the short and long term in regards to your homeless issue. Now, the housing report, that was a very interesting thing. I'm lovingly calling it, and I hope Jerry's there to hear this one. I call it the One Fresno Housing Fallacy Report. I have never seen such an incomplete, not competent, report in my life. You know, I literally stopped a couple of pages in, because there were nothing but graphs, but there was no verbiage discussing what the graphs meant. The bullet points were like, yeah, okay, what is this marketing? There were so many typos, graph, graphic errors. It, it was just, it was like, my taxpayer dollars went to that. Let's see. And the homeless. Oh, my goodness. Let, let's start talking about the homeless. It's been now more, more than two months that I've requested from the city, the policies and procedures of the heart and the homeless task force, or whatever rendition you're calling it. And I still haven't seen it. It's nice to see, you know, this nice graphic that was poorly done, that really doesn't discuss what the positives and what's working in the process, because right now, a lot of your system that you have set up in, for the homeless, is not working. You may say, here's the number of people that we've housed. Here are the number of people that have transitioned. Really, what, where are the numbers of the number of people that got kicked out because their doors got busted in in the middle of the night? Where are the complaints system for the homeless that reside there? Where are their opportunities to get regressed? And I'll say to you, by the way, I really do think H Spees needs to be, his position needs to be reallocated someplace else, or he needs to be fired from the city, because he is truly not presenting the true facts of what is occurring, trying to solve your problem.
Lisa, we're about 20 seconds over. Thank you.
All right. Sorry about that.
No worries. Next on Zoom is going to be Ernest Gonzalez.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. You have two and a half minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll stay on point, which is the Here to Stay. I'm a Hispanic, 60-year-old man that is totally against it because of certain reasons. It states that it's comprehensive. To understand comprehensive means to include all elements, to be complete. This report is neither of that. I'll state some of their points. Their report is an overview of 46 anticipated policies we are recommending based on the firsthand experience of Fresno residents, but not landlord or business people. It's skewed and biased, and they admitted on page 14 of the report, the individuals of Thrivers do not represent Fresno, but their activism in Oakland, Georgia, and LA. Now, the initial science assessment was to develop a recommendation for Southwest, but now they think that it includes all of Fresno. They ignore AB 1482, because that is your rent control. That are your protections. Thrivers acknowledged that on page 14, saying this, "In response to the signs of implicit bias, the Thrivers Group team developed a demographic alternative narrative." You hear that? Alternative, a positive skewing profile of social values. That's their statement. They're saying that they're going to lie to get their activism going. Read the report. They have a lot of things that are anti-business. You have to have both sides for it to work. If you're only going to go with activists, you're going to have a skewed report. You're going to have skewed implementation. You have to have business, community together. This report does not have that. Look, I don't live in a bear area because I can't afford it. It's not discrimination. It's reality. But I would like help from our community and our government. That is common sense. This report, Here to Stay, has no, zero common sense, only activism. So stay away from it with all heart, unless they implement including everybody involved, which is business and landlords and a couple other institutions. That's my say, and hopefully you guys understand where I'm coming from. Thank you from a Hispanic person of Fresno, who loves Fresno a lot.
Okay, we are coming back to the chamber for a few more comments. Next in the chamber, we have Marisa Morasa.
Hi, everyone. My name is Marisa Morasa. I work with Power California, and I'm also a Fresno resident. And I support the adoption of the top 10 Here to Stay Report recommendations. And just to start, I ask that there are additional opportunities to comment on and discuss this housing plan, as many young people are in class right now, were working during this time, and we know that young people are directly feeling the impacts of the housing crisis. No matter what we look like, how much money we have in our wallets, or which district we live in, we all want a place that we can call home. The high cost of housing and the threat of evictions make young people anxious about their future, uncertain about making rent and keeping their homes. The housing crisis in Fresno will only get worse without strong leadership, without strong leaders willing to push forward policies to protect residents. Greedy corporate landlords are evicting our families at a higher rate in the Central Valley than nationally. And this is why we need the recommendations from the Here to Stay Report, that outline immediate and long-term solutions to the growing and ongoing housing crisis. For example, right to counsel ensures that every eligible tenant has a right to an attorney when their housing is at risk. It ensures that tenants' rights are upheld and their voices are heard in eviction cases. To keep young people and their families safe and housed, Fresno City Council must invest in affordable housing now by passing rent control or rent stabilization in the city. This is the only policy that can immediately provide relief to renters facing unaffordable rent increases. We keep making national headlines. That's not okay. It can be the best defense against rising rents and displacement by regulating the rate at which rent can increase. I also want to highlight the top policy for 18 to 24-year-olds in the report is to have a community land trust. Young people and their families deserve a future that guarantees safe, stable housing for all. The city of Fresno should support establishing CLTs and appropriately fund them annually. We need more than $1 million to make that happen. Our ask is for the city to create a timeline for implementation of these top 10 recommendations. The city also needs to report back to the community and have intentional opportunities for feedback. We need to be able to ask questions. We need to be able to measure support and engagement on these policies. One meeting is not enough. Thank you.
Next, we are going to have Eric Payne.
Good evening, Council. Eric Payne, Executive Director of the Central Valley Urban Institute. The One Fresno Housing Plan is a 140-page document, and it's a lot to unpack in two minutes. I would request that the council consider as a part two to this conversation that would allow more time for CBOs who were not invited to the table to digest this document and come back with a congressional-style hearing that would allow CBOs an opportunity to respond before council. As mentioned by staff, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportu, once-in-a-generation opportunity, and we have to get it right collaboratively. This proposed historic investment of $259 million, while merited and needed, misses the mark. A 2019 report from Brookings Institute says 70% of extremely low-income households spend 50% or more of their income in housing in the city of Fresno. $1 million out of $260 million is not enough for down payment assistance. It's disappointing. Home ownership needs to be prioritized as a strategy. I was hoping to see more of that. If the priority is to shift from 35%, 65% homeownership rental ratio, we need to support down payment assistance for LMI residents. Chapter 8 of the, of the Housing the Unhoused has reduction goals of 20% and 35% over three years as a housing benchmark by the city of Fresno. Respectfully, does not align with the blueprint to end homelessness released in January by the California Interagency Council on Homelessness. A coordinated effort by the governor's office comprised of 14 state agencies to drive a historic investment of $19 billion to zero out homelessness in the state of California in year one alone. The goal of the Housing the Unhoused strategy is to reduce Fresno's family homelessness by 35% and single adult homelessness by 20% by June of 2024, while maintaining a safe exit rate of above 50% in 90 to 120 days from the shelter triage centers. Some of the goals are broad. Example, item four on page 82, partner with Fresno City College for Hope Project, targeting 18 to 74 years of age. Let's be bold to zero out homelessness at Fresno City. The program would only need to house, to, to, to zero out homelessness would only need to house 200 students.
Mr. Payne, thank you for your time. That's, that's time.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, I'm going to have TJ Shelton.
Howdy. How y'all doing? Brother Wildsboro was speaking about a Christopher Leo Washington and a Jalen, who is a, a part of an organization, and they were like to speak to housing injustice, and he was trying to read a statement from them. But basically tomorrow, they're having a get-together off of De Visadero Street for victims of justice, and those are often people who are also people who are also housing-challenged. Our housing problem's a real problem. The amount of money we spend on hotels, in my opinion, isn't well-spent. I wish our mayor came from construction and not law enforcement. But that's, I've worked with Self-Help Housing and also Habitat for Humanity. I've swung hammers for them. I've wired houses for them, both as a younger person in the past and more recently. We need broader, smarter, bigger plans of things to do, and it sounds to me like we should have more than one side of this agreeing and talking together, and we need to have a once-in-a-generation conversation that is indeed more comprehensive. There's members of this council have done things that make my life hard. I've been feeding homeless people for years. My family has made like 30 gallons, go down there, take the kids, play chess, hang out, stay overnight at some of these encampments that we have moved. Some of the places where they naturally go, we should have never rounded them up and moved them. I've had business people who have donated to me to be able to assist homeless people in the community, to turn around, and a couple of weeks later have the things that we gave as resources to help people being cleared and moved. And we need some, some type of a better plan, and I think 3D-printed yards and community centers beats the snot out of hotels.
Thank you. So we're gonna move back over to Zoom, a few more folks. Next on Zoom, we have Preston Moore.
Hi, thank you guys for taking me and taking this call. So I'm representing District 3, and I'm gonna start small, then I'll grow. So I'm calling essentially about this homeless crisis and a few other things as you guys move forward with this plan. So the intersection of Shields and Valentine, in a lot of ways, kind of shines a light on one of the problems that we face in Fresno. I know it's not a one, an easy solution, but we do, I am expecting, as a property owner, I own multiple properties in this neighborhood, and I am expecting more out of individuals who are taking the lead, such as HB's and everyone else who is involved in that process. I understand it's difficult. It's owned by multiple people, multiple jurisdictions. But I'm telling you guys right now, if you go past that intersection right now, you're gonna see anywhere from 50 to 100 people. You can't even see what's going on in that back corner. I have video, I have images, I have all kinds of stuff to show you guys the reality of what's going on out there. It's a very sad situation, but I do have to say that some of these people are unfortunately a victim of their own decisions, and we cannot ignore the fact that people have to be held accountable for some of the things that they do. The people in this community, and again, there's hundreds of families in this community, they deserve to live in a place that is well-kept, that the law is enforced in. And what's going on across the street, what's going on at that intersection is against the law. And what, what the people are looking for, what my tenants are looking for, what myself, I'm looking for, and I'm sure the hundreds of other families in this community, and the people that, in the city of Fresno who drive past that intersection every day, they're expecting some type of solution. They're expecting the area to be cleaned up and for a long-term solution to be implemented at that intersection. The other thing is this, I really would hope that you guys would try to incentivize investors to come into Fresno and to some of these areas that you guys want to see revitalized. These are the people who are going to pour their hard-earned money into the community to beautify it. We're not asking for all of these handouts. What we're asking for, really, in a lot of ways, is just for the law to be enforced, for us to have confidence to know that the law is going to support us and assist us in trying to beautify Fresno. This is what we want. This is a community effort, but we can't do it by ourselves. We need the help of people who care. There has to be balance, I understand, between compassion, but when you have drug addicts, when kids in this neighborhood have to come outside and see people smoking crystal meth by the trashcans, people who are coming from across the street, coming into this community, breaking into units, you know, destroying units. And again, I'm talking about, I've witnessed it firsthand. People from across the street come over here, literally smoking crystal meth, right in front of a trashcan. It's a terrible, terrible thing. And we do need solutions. I know it's not easy, again, and I appreciate the work you guys are doing. The other thing I'm gonna say before I get out of here is this.
Preston, you're actually over time right now, so I'm gonna move on to the next speaker. But thank you for taking the time to attend and provide input. Next on Zoom, we have Haley White.
Hi, everyone. Just wanted to say today that I support the here to stay report. I agree with a lot of my fellow Fresno residents who have spoke already. Most recently, Marissa, what she was talking about, kind of echoes what I'm thinking, Brandy, Gloria, and others. I wanted to just have on the record, because I've heard some people talking about it, I wanted to clarify that the here to stay report does not recommend rent control but rent stabilization that keeps rent affordable, but also with a percentage profit that landlords can have. And then I just also want to, in what I've heard in many places, just encourage everyone with the study, the council, and beyond, to consider the housing advocates that we have in the city who are dedicated and passionate and compassionate and incredibly active as the gift that they are, and to believe what they say and what their experience is, even if they don't say it with the kind, measured, polite, grateful voices you want to be hearing from them, and to understand that perhaps they are frustrated because they are often dealing with life and death situations. Quite literally, I've seen the criminalization of the unhoused with my own eyes here in Tower and in neighboring areas like Lowell and downtown, and I cringe every time I hear one of you use a sanitized term like cleanups instead of calling them what they are. This isn't a situation to be sanitized. These are people. They are neighbors. They are us, many of us. We are one or two emergencies away from being these people. I disagree wholly with Preston that the blame is on our neighbors. There's systemic racism, abuse, poverty, cycles of trauma. There is so much that we don't do preventively as a community to help these people ahead of time, and I just hope that that's something we consider moving forward, is the full humanity of everyone involved. Thank you.
All right. Next on Zoom, we have Candy Navarro.
Good afternoon, Council. My name is Candy Navarro. I'm with FPI Management. One of my fellow CAA members couldn't attend today, and as asked, that I read the statement on her behalf. My name is Marsha Wernick, and I am the owner of five single-family houses in Fresno. This opportunity to provide quality homes at a fair, often below-market rate has been a personal passion of mine since I purchased my first property years ago. This driving force to live an ethical life and make the world a better place for others is a direct outgrowth of my childhood experience in a Brooklyn ghetto. Growing up in a large apartment house owned by a slumlord, like so many others with limited income, it was our only option. We were stuck. A lifetime has since passed, but the memories can never be erased. Bottom line, how we lived was not fit for any human being. I have not just read about poverty, I have tasted it firsthand. These experiences have become the core of my landing, landlord-ing responsibilities and decisions. I see them as God's classroom for me to become a full human being, filled with empathy for others and the importance of living an ethical life. My basic theme in providing rental housing is that if it ain't fit for me to live there, then it ain't fit for anyone else. I tell my tenants that my job is to provide them with housing that is both safe and comfortable. Their job is to pay their rent on time, maintain the property, and follow the lease. I may own the house, but I recognize that this is their home. The looming possibility of rent control strikes terror in my heart. The expenses of providing well-maintained, attractive housing generally below-market rates are tremendous and continue to soar. The monies to fund these costs come directly from the rents I collect each month. More rental housing units is what's needed, not tying the hands of the existing landlords who are rapidly selling off their homes and diminishing the rent supply. I recently had a vacancy with over 3,500 views on Zillow in six days. Pitiful. Over 300 persons contacted me with hopes of renting. Within two days, I had already selected a tenant who was leaving his rental home due to its sale by owner. Rental supply keeps diminishing due to unreasonable government restrictions and the fear of rent control. If these changes come to pass, I would have no choice but to exit the housing market. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna come back over to the chamber, and next here in the chamber, we're going to have Matthew Gendian. Matthew? No, Matthew. Okay, next we'll have Dez.
Hello. Let me see, I was in the middle writing, so it's probably gonna mess up. First of all, I want to address Preston Moore. This camp that we have on Shields, there is not 100 people there. There's approximately 14 people, and I have a list of all 14 people that are requesting shelter from that camp right there. We did have FPD show up and ask everybody to move to the back, which is owned by the county. We are playing human ping-pong. We need more affordable housing. We need tiny homes now. We need all that stuff. We also need more police in the apartments across the street from the Shields camp because there are multiple drug dealers in there that are providing the drugs across the street to the addicts. So we do need a lot more people going out there and addressing the drug addicts that are going into these camps, and they are feeling them, they're messing up our camps. They're, they're really, it's bad, you guys. It's really bad. I have, they have until May 8th, so if we can, please get more shelter by May 8th because they are requesting it, and I wish that some of this money and funding would go towards that. The encampment sweeps need to stop. The daily sweeps of 10 to 15 people being swept off the streets daily, and we were told by FPD, Homeless Task Force, that they don't have to offer shelter when they're cleaning. That doesn't make any sense. If people are on our streets and they want shelter and they want housing, we're being told that we do not have to offer them shelter because we're cleaning. But then Dyer said that we don't have to, he does not have to offer shelter if they're not on city property. So I'm a little confused here, you guys. You have to be on city property in order to get shelter, but then Homeless Task Force is saying they don't have to offer shelter because it's cleaning. All we're doing is moving people around, playing human ping-pong, and we need to come up with funding for safe camps and safe lots. That's what we need here, and every district city council member, I'm hoping that would be responsible for their own district, and maybe we can start something new. But we do need the encampment sweeps to stop. In order to get anything done here, we need safe lots. Every, every city, every single one of you, just reach out in your own district and clean up your own district, and hopefully, if Esmeralda does it, Miguel will do it. Miguel does it, Tyler's gonna jump on, and it goes on and on. Just stop the sweeps until we figure out what we're doing. Let's put out the dumpsters. I have spoken to many property owners that say that they're willing to allow the unhoused individuals to live on their property. They will put up beautiful fencing. They just need the city to go ahead and allow them to do it. While you guys are thinking about where to spend the money, allow these property owners to at least help out in the community when they want to.
Thank you, Dez. Next, we're going to have Robert McCloskey.
Thank you for your time today. I just wanted to start out by saying I support the here to stay report and urge you to do the top 10 recommendations soon. I think there's some things missing out of the whole approach to housing, and that is, we have to figure out a way to take the profits out of developing housing. More publicly-supported projects, more nonprofit projects. A lot of the dollars that come from HUD go to consultants. They go to low-interest loans to develop very few units of low-income housing. We gotta start thinking outside the box. I really appreciate Habitat for Humanity's participation and its effort, and that's the direction we need to go to. I think, one thing I have to say is that shelters are not housing. I mean, I give the city some credit for trying to put people in these motels, but it's not a long-term solution, and we all, we all gotta realize that what happens to these folks when these motels are gonna be sold for permanent housing? I haven't heard an answer yet from anybody on that one. I think one thing that we've been talking about here is stop the sweeps. I personally saw a sweep where I helped a gentleman move all his stuff. He wasn't offered housing from anybody before the sweep. This was a 180 sweep. All his stuff was later stolen in the neighborhood I moved him to. Police confiscated arrests. He returned on Friday to try to get housing. They weren't gonna give it to him. And this is a guy that stayed at the camp for several years. So I think what we're, what's missing in the whole approach is the Housing First approach. The shelter system hasn't been working. It's putting a lot of dollars into temporary solutions, but Housing First does not require people experiencing homelessness to address all of their problems, including behavioral health problems, or to graduate through a series of service programs before they can access housing. Housing First does not mandate participation in services either before obtaining housing or in order to retain housing. The Housing First approach views housing as a foundation for life improvement and enables access to permanent housing without prerequisites or conditioning beyond those of a typical renter. Supported services are offered to support people who need them, but housing stability has to come first. Where it's been implemented, there's been much more success in getting people off the streets permanently because people actually do recover from their issues if they're long-term chronically ill with the Housing First approach. I urge every member of the council and the mayor to look into this. Let's look at a long-term solution to this. Rather than putting $144 million, which the city, county, and the FMCLC have already received, into a transitional and temporary approach with these shelters.
Thank you, Mr. McCloskey. Next, we'll have Nicole Linder.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Dyer, Council President, as far as the members of the Fresno City Council. I, first of all, just wanted to commend the mayor and this council for your significant investment in providing emergency shelter dollars for victims of domestic violence, especially during the COVID pandemic. I'm here today to talk about the item, which is the One Fresno Housing Plan, which is a multi-year future plan, so my comments are about the future. And I want to say that there was a lot of great work and technical content and analysis, and I was excited to see so many mentions of the intersection of domestic violence and homelessness. When dollars are allocated for housing priorities, though, most often victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, and sexual assaults are not included. Because federal law prohibits us entering client information into community-based databases like HMIS, a platform for homeless service providers, the data then is used to inform gaps in services. As a result, victims are not included in the equation. At the last Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care meeting on April 14, the approval of the HAP3 joint funding plan was discussed, which reflected a decision to not include victims in the funding allocations. MMC raised the question on behalf of victim service providers, and it was confirmed that none of the victim service data was included. The city of Fresno has the highest per capita domestic violence calls in the state of California. Not having a place for victims to stay is not the only way we're going to solve domestic violence. However, it can lead to future violence, potentially homicide. If I look at the plan here, there really isn't any specificity on what is needed and how it will be funded, except for the HAP3, which was already declined, and ESG, which is on your council agenda for tomorrow, with an elimination of funding for DV. Therefore, I'm just asking that it be further developed and included, although we are not included on the committee as the only dedicated provider for domestic violence, and the DV-coordinated entry for HUD through the COC, we are offering to be a technical assistance and resource to the council and the cities you put forward your further information. Thank you so much.
All right. We're gonna head back over to Zoom for a few more speakers. Next on Zoom, we have Danae Garza.
Hi, my name is Danae, and I'm in District 6, and I also agree that there should be some further development because I do think rent control is a great idea. Assembly Bill 1482, which is rent control, where landlords are not allowed to raise rent more than one time a year at a certain percentage. Right now, it's 9%, but 9% for people who are living paycheck to paycheck is a big jump. Also, I recently took a Also, I recently took a class through CAA that, um, there's an incoming shift that is about to take place with us several different generations, um, being the silent generation, the boomers. Um, those are some of the largest generations in existence. And they're going to be, and have already started, leaving the planet and transitioning into the other side. And so, there will be a lot of open housing. And so, my encouragement is like, it says plastered under the city of Fresno, "In God We Trust." And so, I know it's a cliche thing to say that God has a plan. And so, I encourage everybody to just pray, um, pray for our city, pray for good ideas, pray for divine intervention, and also pray that people are rooted in their actions through love and doing the right thing. And just slowing down and making sure that all the decisions that are going to be taking place be really thoughtfully looked over and how they're going to affect you individually as well as your neighbor. For we do know it is divine law to love our neighbors like we love ourselves. And, uh, there is work to be done. And so, I just pray that aces get in their places. And, um, but my, my, my final statements would be that there needs to be further development on this plan before anything is passed. But rent control is a great idea for the city of Fresno and for Fresnians. Not for people who are coming in from LA and San Jose that are used to paying two thousand, three thousand dollars a month for rent, but for Fresnians that are working for the city of Fresno, that are working for dispatchers through, um, nine-one-one dispatchers, which I have a lot of tenants that rent here that their major thing on why they move is because they can't afford rent because of the wages that they're currently being paid. And so, that, that is it. That's all I had to say.
Okay, uh, next on Zoom, we'll have Daniel McCoy.
Hi, this is Dan McCoy. Um, thanks for this opportunity. Um, I work for GSF Property.
Dale, you're muted. You need to unmute.
Uh, is that, is it back on now?
Yes, you're back on.
Can you hear me? Okay, great, thanks. So, um, my company, GSF Properties, manages a couple thousand units of affordable housing in addition to market rates, uh, throughout the valley. And I think it's really important to understand that you could, that you can't restrict your way into more affordable housing. The way to make more affordable housing is to incentivize affordable end-market rate development. Rent control does the opposite of that. It disincentivizes the developers and when they have the ability to move into neighboring cities where there's not the same restriction. So, in that way, it's going to really hurt our ability to get more housing in Fresno, which should be the goal. It reduces property values, which has a huge negative impact on our overall city infrastructure and results in our inability to provide the programs that people need. You know, and further, it also reduces current owners' willingness. You know, we deal with a lot of owners of properties that have invested millions of dollars into their properties over the last several years because they knew that there was a return on their investment and also it added to pride of ownership. And it improves the neighborhood that they, that they, um, own properties in. And if there's rent control, if there's an inability to raise the overall value of the unit with the increases in costs that we've been seeing, we're going to have no ability to reinvest in properties and improve the overall neighborhoods that we, that we, we and so many of our residents call home. So, I thank you very much for this opportunity. I just want to say that rent control is not the answer to the problems that we are seeing, both in the affordable and in the market rate side of developing new housing. Thank you.
All right, next on Zoom, we have Lethal Garcia. Lethal, you're muted. Please unmute, and you have two and a half minutes.
Hello, yes. My name is Lethal Garcia. I'm a local. I support the Here to Stay report, uh, just for the record. Um, as far as Dyer's thing, I think organizations and other nonprofits, uh, need to get more funding. We need community involvement from us who understand the needs of the people on, uh, on the streets. We need more meaningful conversations with the community before big money decisions are made. Uh, giving more money into what isn't working will continue to delay the proper help for the street family. Uh, continuing to fund Pavarello Missions Salvation Army, Marjorie Mason, uh, Marjorie Mason is, uh, is detrimental. I, I don't see anybody but a few churches out there, Pavarello, uh, maybe twice a month, whereas I'm out there four times a week if my three chronic illnesses permit me. And Miguel Arias, you saw me on Sunday when you were coming out of the Tower Theater. So, uh, I think, uh, all of these places, they can't do it alone. Mind you, I don't see them doing it all, period. And that's obvious to me and other people who are out there serving. You need to spread out the money and stop funding, stop funding Dyer's dogs, I mean friends, his friends. Uh, and as far as the incentive program to get landlords to rent to unhoused community, that's a small budget portion that's going towards that. I, I, I don't agree with that as much as I don't agree with Gary Brettafeld's fox hair dye job. Thank you for your time.
All right, we're coming back into the, uh, chamber. Uh, next speaker here in the chamber will be Erica Cruz.
In, uh, coming to these meetings over the past few months, I see that you all are very quick to continue to congratulate each other for your passive, surface-level, untimely, and inhumane work that you all continue to put forth. It shows loud and clear how much you care about everyone and how your heart goes out and more of this BS jargon that you even spout throughout today's meeting, when you continue to get up and walk around and talk to each other while other people are talking, people who took time off work to be here to talk to you. So, what I would suggest first is maybe you all have scheduled potty breaks so you guys can get your wiggles out and do what you need to do to be present for your job. You're hearing from people with a direct need. People who took time off work to be here, people who left their children, people who made sacrifices to speak with you. Ones that voted for you, want the job, for the job that you wanted, the job that you worked for. You have the solutions to the problems. They've been outlined, researched, and truly collaborate with, with the community and organizations that are presented here in the Here to Stay report, which you've had for months. Let us stay focused on the immediate need and immediate solutions. For HPs to get up here and say that there are hundreds of homeless people, no. There are thousands of people on the streets. We know that. We feed them, we clothe them, we drive them, we put them in the warming centers. When you all decide to keep them open, we bring them water when you don't want to open cooling centers. There are thousands of people out here on the street, and it shows exactly how out of touch these departments and staff are. How long do people have to keep suffering for their faults, for the faults of their parents, the elderly, the children, the sick, the disabled, the infirm? People need protections. They need mental health services. They need rehab services. And as you profiteers of people, or should I say landowners and representative of landowners, I'm glad you guys can hire people to come here and talk to you. When I had to take time off work, lose a day's wages to come up here and sit and be ignored by y'all, walk out of the fucking room when people coming up here to talk to you. Why are you so afraid of other, of, you, excuse me, you profiteers of people and all of you who are afraid of other folks, people who fell to the faults of their circumstances? I invite you to come work with us. I invite you to come out on the street and talk to these people you're so afraid of, these drug addicts, these criminals, these teenagers who are just in foster care. We all want the same thing. We want to live in a thriving, safe community. And now, what you're pushing for is hindering helping people out of speculative, negative, and inaccurate ideas. We need immediate action and further conversations. Again, come talk to us. We're here. We're out on the streets. You can find Dez any day of the week out there doing the work that she does. Work with the people who know the people. We also need to provide oversight for these organizations that you want to continue giving millions of dollars to when we tell you that the employees mistreat people. And also, again, like my girl Lisa was talking about, what the hell was going on with the PowerPoint you guys had up here? I couldn't even read the damn thing because the font was so small.
Erica, we're about twenty seconds over time. Thank you for coming down.
All right, you need to do better. Thank you for listening to me. We need an immediate, immediate action, not in years. We need to know what y'all are gonna do in the next thirty days at the next, at the city council meeting next month.
Next, we'll have Lance Cruz.
Quite as ready as my wife was. Uh, good job. Um, my name's Lance Cruz. I support the Here to Stay report. Please, uh, take it under consideration, implement these things as soon as possible. This has been worked on for a very long time, a lot of important input. Um, I wish I'd had the time to go through the, uh, uh, the mayor's plan over the last week. I'm gonna take it for granted that, that the comments that were made. Interesting that we're talking about hundreds of homeless. It must, he must have misspoken. Um, I used to live in a rent-controlled area in LA, mid-city. It was beautiful. Like, they couldn't redevelop and bring cranes in fast enough to, to, to redevelop the apartments all around mine. Um, we paid, we had a two percent maximum increase per year. And they, the neighborhood just kept growing and growing and growing and growing. They built them bigger. They did whatever they had to do. But they knew at two percent per year, they were all getting rich, right? The property managers were getting rich, the landlords getting rich, everybody's getting rich. And, and, and I've heard complaints, very strange, ethereal complaints with nothing con, concrete in them from the property, the, uh, rentier class in this meeting. I, I don't know, they, they think rent control will hurt things. Like, they, they, they think. They have a gut feeling. The, the one woman said she could, was gonna present things to you in layman's terms because she could multiply by nine percent. Um, you have a lot, I know you guys have a lot you're dealing with. The homelessness problem, the unhoused problem is extraordinary in this city. I didn't know that sixty-five percent of Fresnoans were renters. That's an extraordinary problem. Um, how are you gonna get, you can have development without speculation, right? You can have development without people getting rich. I live in a three-bedroom home. My very gracious landlord charges me eleven hundred dollars a month. You know why? Because I know his mortgage is only seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. That, that's a weird white elephant and all this development and, 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 and speculation. There's no one's talking about how much money these people are making. It, I live in a three-bedroom home. The landlord has that seven hundred and fifty dollar mortgage, and I pay him eleven hundred dollars. He's doing pretty well getting eleven hundred dollars out of a three-bedroom home. How are single, how are one-bedroom apartments going for fourteen hundred dollars? Like, there's a huge profit problem, right? Um, thank you for your time. Uh, please, we are here to stay and, um, thanks.
Next in the chamber, we'll have Mark Trojan. Mark? Mark Trojan? Okay, we're gonna move back to Zoom. Uh, on Zoom, we'll have Jessica Mahoney.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Jessica. You have, uh, two and a half minutes.
Thank you. I support the Here to Stay report. I don't support the Dyer Kick the Can Down the Road report. For years, the city of Fresno has been kicking the can down the road. Well, now, we're gonna pick up the can and we're gonna recycle it for money. It, it's time. We've been warning you for years, for years. This is going to happen. The housing boom, well, it's not a, it's a boom for the developers, but guess what? It's a bomb for the unsheltered. It's a bomb for people that can't afford their rents. It's a bomb for the people living in their cars. It needs to stop. You need to listen to the people. HPs needs to be fired immediately. We need to start taking plans. From Oakland, Santa Clara, all the central coast communities, they have tiny homes. That's what they did with their, uh, money during the pandemic and the Home Key one, two, three, four, eighty-seven. It's time to, Fresno, this came out of HP's mouth, well, if we get safe camps, we're in synthesizing camping. Well, you don't want them out in front of the sidewalks. You don't want them in front of the business. Well, you just admitted you don't have enough low-income, uh, housing. You don't have low-barrier shelters. Why can't we have safe parking lots? I have met people that work really good jobs, that live in their cars. And they ask me when I'm at an encampment, passing out water, hey, is this camp, uh, a safe camp? No. Can, can I park here? You think it'll be all right? I said, no, it's not safe for you. Keep moving. Whatever is working for you, where you're not getting caught up and people know that you're sleeping in your car, keep doing it, and I'll find you when we open a safe parking lot. So, you could be safe as a woman, a single woman. She's a nurse living in her car. That's ridiculous. Dyer went on TV, Channel Thirty clipped them saying, oh, we, in two thousand and nineteen, we used to go and take their tents away, and we used to throw their stuff away. And now, we're giving them hope. No, you're not. You're doing the same GD thing. As a Christian man, you should be ashamed of yourself to go and with, and smoosh it up with the big city mayors. They're probably laughing at you behind your back. Everybody laughs at Fresno. Because we're ghetto and we don't get in line like everybody else is doing to help their community. It's way past due, way past due. So, I'm gonna stop while I'm ahead because I'm angry. I drank too much coffee. But it's time to wake up. I don't want to hear solutions or, or plans or graphs. Uh, it, it's time to, it's time to build what you've been talking about. Show, show me the money. Show me where the money, I want to see a tiny home lot. I don't want...
Thank you, Jessica. We are, we are over time. Thank you. Uh, next, it's going to be Janice Schaefer on Zoom.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, that I appreciate that you are listening to the community and that you have opened this forum for others to speak, uh, to this situation. Uh, we are also, uh, what I would call mom-and-pop nonprofit housing providers. We maintain a historic home, and that's a challenge by itself. But to also support safe, quality, moderate-rate rental housing for our tenants puts us at a line. And as it is, we have to provide double the funds that we receive as rental income to maintain this historic home. We really need your help to protect ourselves and our tenants, as well as this home. Uh, both, all of these, I hope, are assets to the community with not providing a single more restriction. The answer is in additional housing and economic development. We're hoping that we don't make another problem by trying to solve another. Thank you so much for your time and for listening today.
Okay, next on Zoom, we have Matthew Gendian. Gendian.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome, Matthew. You have two and a half minutes.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Gendian, born and raised in Fresno. I am, uh, spent all fifty-three years of my life, except for the four or five that I was in Southern California, studying for my doctoral degree in sociology, came back to Fresno. I rent an apartment in District One with, uh, led by Esmeralda Soria, who's, who's in, uh, representing that district. And is this plan too long, delayed? Yeah. Has, have we waited too long to hear the report about the Here to Stay? Yeah. Uh, but I'm telling you, I'm here to stay and I'm not going away. Uh, my first comment is thank you for finally giving the attention to what I define as one of the most important core issues to the health, vitality, and sustainability of our beloved city of Fresno. I thank the city council for providing this public meeting on housing. We've heard a lot today, and there's a lot to digest in all of the reports, Here to Stay, the One Fresno Housing Plan. But in this present moment, I want to show some appreciation for the mayor, for even attempting a Herculean effort to tackle our housing problems. I appreciate this affordable housing expertise the Deputy Mayor Grundy brings to the table and the capable staff on his team that assembled a hundred and thirty-nine-page report, the likes of which I have not seen in my more than twenty-five years of research on housing in Fresno. I appreciate, I like how this plan is tailored to meet Fresno's specific housing needs to address the mismatch. I like the comprehensive approach to address the full housing continuum with an emphasis on equity for unhoused, extremely low and low-income individuals. I like the inclusion of the review of the city's planning and building department's staff, systems, and structures. The one area I want to say is inclusionary zoning. Be more bold. Ten percent is not enough. You gotta make it twenty. I've seen a lot of plans in my twenty-eight years of research at Fresno State, community organizing, and civic engagement on the issue of housing in Fresno. The proof will be in the pudding, the dedication of sufficient funding, the implementation of these plans that lead to the achievement of these housing goals and outcomes. I like to see it. Here to stay. Thank you.
All right, next on Zoom, we're going to have Adriana Rivera.
Hello, uh, thank you for giving me a moment to say something. Um, so, though well-intended rent... Um, so though well-intended rent control will create additional consequences regarding the housing shortage, I work for a very large developer here in Fresno. Um, and those people who are under the assumption that we are just lining our pockets, I will tell you that the same exact project that we built last year is costing us 60% more to build today. Um, because of that, we are not going to be building that project. Um, so it's just very frustrating on our side because we are trying to build stuff and there's a lot of red tape that we are not able to build, um, different projects. Um, and with the rent control, um, the income that we do bring in, we put that right back into the properties to paint them, to make sure that there's no liability issues in regards to the sidewalks, making sure that it looks nice. And if we aren't doing the rent increases, um, we can't do the upgrades to the, to the buildings, um, causing basically the building to deteriorate and lose value. So, uh, that's just my input and that's it.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, so that's going to conclude our, uh, public comment portion here of the workshop special meeting. I'm going to now come back up here to the dais, turn it over to, um, my colleagues. I know you were all taking notes and had, uh, and listened to the many, many comments that we had. Uh, so first punched up on the dais here, I had Councilmember Soria. All right, uh, we'll swing back around. Councilmember Arius.
Thank you all for coming today and, you know, spending time reading all these reports. Have a couple of questions for staff. So, um, whoever wants to address some of the questions. From my reading of both reports and to Kyle's point, I too participated in meetings, but it doesn't mean that I authored the report of One Fresno. If I would have authored it, you could imagine it would be distinctly differently. So I think we have to ensure that that report indicates that we participated in meetings, we participate in discussions, but by no means does it reflect our, you know, unanimous recommendations. Nonetheless, I would credit the administration and the mayor and deputy mayor. This is the most comprehensive series of data on the housing market in Fresno that I have ever seen. Um, we tend to be in space here at the dais where people will claim that the sky is falling or the sky will fall based on assumptions. If we pass, if we don't approve liquor licenses, we won't get grocery stores. If we do rent control, all investment would stop. Not the case. Um, just a couple of factors that I want to point out. I've heard some, you know, remarks about we need to build our way out of this and don't do anything related to managing the increases of rent, even though we've all seen that they've increased it as a record rate. So the average family income in Fresno is about $54,000. If you have about $250 of monthly credit card bills and you come up with a $5,000 payment, you can buy a house worth about $166,000. The average sale of a home in Fresno is $365,000. It's a $199,000 gap. So we clearly cannot build ourselves out of this crisis by simply focusing on single-family market-rate homes. For years, we have done, as a city, what the market has asked us to do. Apartment Association, Chamber of Commerce, Real Estate Association, developers, mayors, passing gone, have all said, let the market, leave the market alone. Don't do anything. Just let the market drive development in the city of Fresno. Um, I recall somebody telling me about the trickle-down economy, the trickle-down economics of housing. If you allow construction of $400,000 homes sprawl across North Fresno, eventually, the person will move up and create an affordable housing unit. In the trickle-down economics of housing, they never calculated that incomes in Fresno have remained flat for decades. We still have a $54,000 average family income in the city of Fresno. I can assure you, every stakeholder I've spoken to that doesn't want us to in any way intervene on the free market of housing is not spending more than 50% of their income on the rent. They're engaged in capitalism, which is, you know, the right thing to do in our country to make money and to build and to, you know, create a profit that you reinvest in some way or somehow in your family or your business. But we cannot build ourselves out of this crisis. Clearly, four decades of doing that has gotten us to this point of breakage. What I've heard from the advocates is do everything to protect the affordability of the current market, but don't build any new inventory. That's also not a solution. We, we, we have a growing population. None of the recommendations on the here-to-stay report result in new inventory being built immediately. It's about preserving the affordability of the current housing stock, which I appreciate that that's the goal of the here-to-stay report. I'm looking at the One Fresno report and the value for me is that it finally documents the fact that we are in a housing crisis and the free market has made it worse, not better. Um, we have what we now call mismatch. We keep on building and adding more track maps for market-rate homes. All we're going to do is attract more people from out of town that can afford to pay $400,000 for a home. We're not doing anything to increase incomes. As a matter of fact, when this body passed a project labor agreement that guaranteed a living wage, healthcare, and a pension for workers doing city contracted jobs, it was vetoed and undermined by the business community. Even though we know that a source of our problem is that wages aren't growing, there's not enough disposable income being created in our city. So I, I hear us talking past each other. One group is suggesting we focus on the current inventory affordability. Another group suggesting we do the status quo business as usual. And I don't think we're going to make any progress. I, as much as I disagree with former trustee Payne, I actually like his idea of being able to have an honest conversation with the stakeholders. You know, I, I love to subpoena the apartment association, developers, advocates, homeowners, renters, to have an actual conversation of what would happen if we did A, B, or C. You know, that's the kind of conversation we need. Um, the, I don't know how we close a gap of $200,000 for somebody who wants to buy a home in the city of Fresno. In, in my district, I have 22 housing projects pending. Some form of design, funding, or construction. It takes us five years to complete a housing project in the city of Fresno. I don't see the clear urgency to expedite that process. I also see, here's what, what I'm hearing from, from, from folks. Rents are at a record high. Homeless is up. Affordability is down. Infill is down. Our infrastructure dilapidated across the city. Airbnbs are up. A whole lot of people making money on Airbnbs instead of giving up for permanent housing. The Cal, the state of California is asking us to solve this by increasing housing density. And they're giving us a record amount of money to deal with homelessness. Advocates, again, are asking for rent control, inclusionary zoning, right to council, more info developments, land trust, deal with the slum lords, all things we have to do. Uh, to deal with the housing the homeless? Great. None of that would happen immediately. Residents are asking us, not in my backyard. You need to house the homeless? You just can't have the encampment next door. You need to build more housing, but I don't want the five-story housing project in my neighborhood. It's fact. I just spent three and a half hours yesterday in a community meeting in West Fresno and half the time was spent on the discussion of one homeless encampment that resulted in kids not being, not being able to walk next door to a community center because of the pedophiles, the drug, and the human trafficking occurring there. I welcome any of you. I, I'm at encampments every week. I welcome you to a community neighborhood meeting to explain to the homeowner and the renter who's been there for 34 years, why we shouldn't touch the encampments, why we should relocate people, why we shouldn't clean things up. The, the other fact, I, I have the floor. The other fact is apartment rents are going up significantly. We have a drove of investors coming in, increasing rates beyond what's necessary to reinvest in the property. Mobile home rents are going up. Huge challenges before us. And what, what I'm still struggling with is we have all these competing factors and the only viable solutions I keep on seeing that are digestible for everyone is to go slow. Go slow on cleaning up the encampment. Go slow on building a housing project in, near my neighborhood. Go slow on taking one project through 20 committees for public hearings and input. Go slow on high density. Nothing in this report demonstrates the urgency of us doing something that addresses a crisis before us. And I honestly knee-deep on this subject matter. I have market-rate single-family, market-rate high-density, affordable single-family, affordable high-density. I have emergency shelters, transitional shelters, permanent affordable, permanent homeless shelters. Find another district in the city that has every single possible solution for the housing crisis and they're on my district. And my district, quite frankly, is burdened with solving the homeless crisis citywide. I've had this conversation with the mayor many times. When are we going to build a shelter somewhere else? When are we going to do permanent housing somewhere else for folks in need? What, what scares me the most is I see the fastest-growing population of homelessness is seniors on fixed incomes. And I don't see an answer from the private sector. I don't see an answer from the private sector on how we're going to house somebody who makes $800 or $1,000 in their social security and their rent just went up to $1,200. What should we do with those individuals? Wait for them to be homeless and be on the streets? We, we funded one project, but we have thousands of people in the city that are getting to the point of their social security not being sufficient to pay their rent. And that's a private sector, you know, problem that was created. There's no reason why rents should have gone from $700 to $1,300 in two, three years. No reason. Inflation's not that high. Cost of materials aren't that high. It's outside investors coming in, sweeping apartments, putting in some bare minimum of, you know, new coat of paint, windows, and then jacking up the prices irrespective of who they're, you know, making homeless. The other impending crisis I see before us, as if we didn't have enough, is evictions. We're about to debate lifting the emergency order. Even though we know that there's a tsunami of evictions coming, come May 1st, if that order's lifted. We're, we're not prepared for that. We're not prepared for a tsunami of evictions and yet we have to consider opening up the floodgates to that. And I can assure you, not one developer is lining up, not one property owner or landlord to say, send me those individuals, I have space for them. We, we have a problem that we can't build ourselves out of fast enough because the things that are being built are not for the people with the incomes in Fresno, their market rate. Nobody in the private sector is building an apartment complex with a $500 rent. That's not occurring. The, it's disingenuous to hear from the sector, let the market, you know, drive itself until I need a subsidy. And then when they need a subsidy, they're the first ones to line up and say, give me a subsidy and then I'll build affordable. The infrastructure we have in our city at times makes up 30% of a housing project because it's so old and dilapidated. That's not our doing here. We just got here. That infrastructure is old, 40, 50 years old. It doesn't pencil out. It doesn't pencil out for the private sector. It doesn't pencil out for the public sector to build affordable housing infill when the infrastructure is that dilapidated and has to be completely replaced. To suggest that we're not taking this serious is not fair. I can demonstrate to you 22 housing projects that have taken up more of my last lifespan in the last three years than anything, including my family. It's not easy to do. The crisis is real and I don't know if we accomplished anything today besides being very transparent about how bad the situation is for everyone. And maybe that's all we could have hoped for today in this conversation. Because until we are able to do Q and A with the stakeholders who behind the scenes on social media are going to, you know, make their arguments without being challenged, are going to state their facts, are going to, you know, argue the sky's falling and, you know, no investment will occur. I, I've been there before. I, I've been in space where people tell me, if I, if you, if you hold me accountable for A, B's going to happen. And guess what the reality is? There's plenty of other people willing to invest in Fresno and they don't need a 30% markup. There's plenty of other folks who are willing to build and live in our city and I still struggle with the fact that I hear from residents every day and their question is, everything you're doing in the housing crisis is to address future residents of the area, not the existing residents. The limited resources I have, my residents are asking me, fix my street, build my vacant lot, clean the homeless encampment in my block. They're not begging me for a brand-new five-story housing project for the future residents. They're asking me to fix a neighborhood that hasn't been invested in in 40 years. And it's nobody's fault, but it's everybody's responsibility. And that's the space we're in. And I, again, thank you, Mayor, for being very public about the reality. Thank you for all the stakeholders who are going to lay out their claim and their positions on the matter. And ultimately, this body's going to have to decide what we're willing and able to digest and take action immediately. But I will caution all the folks who are going to call us, be prepared to defend your position with facts, with figures, and with the interests of the city of Fresno residents, not your own pocketbook. Those times have passed. Thank you all.
Next up, we have Council Vice President Maxwell, followed by Councilmember Chavez.
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I do want to, first of all, thank everybody who did take the time to come here today and sit through, you know, what has come to be now three and a half hours of testimony and comment. I do appreciate the time that the community does make to make their voices heard. Um, I want to thank the doctor and the folks with the Thrivance Group who came with the here-to-stay report. I think there's a lot of really excellent proposals in there that I look forward to implementing here in the city of Fresno. And I especially want to thank Mayor Jerry Dyer and his team for putting together the One Fresno Housing Plan because I think despite a lot of the criticism that I've heard, from what I've seen in my time in Fresno, we haven't seen a comprehensive plan like this before in our city. And whether you agree or not with everything in it, I certainly do not. That's okay. We have not seen anything to this scale before. And I appreciate his staff's work and commitment on bringing that forward. Because let's be honest, this is the number two, number one, number two issue facing our city is the housing and the homelessness. It's not just in the country, it's not just in the state. It's happening right here in our own backyard. And so I do appreciate that, Mayor, in bringing this proposal before us today. As city council members, you know, we oftentimes try to bring forward a proposal or a policy here or there to address our homelessness, to address our, uh, housing crisis here in the city of Fresno. But it's really not enough. It takes the mayor, who commands a staff of over 4,000 people and our strong mayor form of government, to come together with a comprehensive proposal to address a citywide issue. Um, and then that's what I saw today. And again, Mayor, I don't, um, I agree with a lot of what you have in the proposal. There's some things I have some disagreements on, but I have not seen something like this before come before the council. And so I appreciate that. And I also want to address a lot of the criticism that I've seen, um, online and in the media, that this is an either-or. Either we have to go entirely with the here-to-stay report or we have to go entirely with the mayor's housing plan. That's a fault. That's a false dichotomy because what I've seen in the mayor's housing plan is a lot of those suggestions from the Thrivements Group. It doesn't include all of them, but it would be unfair to say that he did not listen and he did not incorporate that into his housing plan. So in my opinion, this is not an either-or. I know the mayor, I know he's been willing to work with this council to make adjustments and be flexible when it comes to things that we disagree with and certain things that we want to see in a citywide housing plan. So with that being said, and my kudos, I do just have a little bit of constructive criticism, and I'll keep it brief. I mentioned that there are some things in the report I agree with. There are some things I disagree with. But I just want to touch on a couple of things that I didn't see in the report that I would like to work towards with the administration, with my colleagues. And some of these are maybe a little bit more difficult to digest than others and take longer implementation than others. But these are things that are important to me and that I didn't see directly addressed in the report. So the first one that I want to talk about, because we're seeing it more and more since the COVID crisis and the work-from-home phenomenon that's faced our country, including City of Fresno, is how do we incentivize? I want to see more plans on how do we incentivize? How do we make more viable the opportunity for Fresnoans specifically to become homeowners here in the City of Fresno? That's what I'm interested in doing. What I'm not interested in doing is making Bay Area residents or L.A. residents twice or thrice over homeowners. I am not interested in that here in the City of Fresno. What I'm interested in, how do we make Fresnoans homeowners? And how do we incentivize that? And how do we make that more viable as opposed to folks that live in L.A. and San Francisco buying their second or third house that they visit a couple of weeks throughout the year? I'm not interested in that. What I don't see in here that I would like to work on further is how are we going to address homes that folks are sitting on for months and months that continue to go vacant? We sit on a lot of property here in the City of Fresno, a lot of single-family homes that, you know, through a good amount of the year, go uninhabited. That's housing stock that we could be utilizing to house people living here in the City of Fresno. Lastly, I saw a recommendation in the mayor's housing plan for the down payment assistance for those that want to become homeowners here in the City of Fresno. I think that's an excellent idea. I think it would be a missed opportunity to talk about down payment assistance for folks that want to become homeowners without also discussing a down payment plan for folks that found out that their rental house that they're living in has gone on the market, and they have thirty days to move out and move into a new apartment or home. Because we know most Fresnoans are living paycheck to paycheck. A good chunk of Fresnoans are living at or below the poverty line or hovering slightly above it and don't have that opportunity, given thirty days, to move into another apartment or another home. It's just financially infeasible for most Fresnoans. And so I'd like to work with the administration and my colleagues on further addressing some of those. Those are important to me. I know they're important to the people living in my district. But overall, Mayor, I think you've given us a lot to work with. I think the Thrivements Group has given us a lot of great recommendations. And again, what we heard today is a policy proposal. I imagine this is going to be analyzed and dissected by all seven council members up here until we come up with the final package. But this really was the first start here today, and I appreciate that from all the folks out there, all the folks online from the Thrivements Group, and again, our city manager and our mayor appreciate it. Thank you for the time.
Council Member Chavez.
Thank you, Council President Sorsa. Just want to briefly comment on this beginning of the conversation. I want to thank the mayor and his team for their work. I know it hasn't been easy. I know we've been kind of going back and forth with the council wanting to bring proposals, but then also giving the mayor their space to come up with this pretty comprehensive housing plan that we have out here, I think, to the tune of three hundred-plus million dollars that we're looking at. I think it's going to be a work in progress. Having been here now twelve years, I've had an opportunity to deal with the housing situation for quite a while. And I just want to share a couple of examples. If some of you may recall, about ten years ago, there was actually a lot of signs outside of our apartment complexes that said, "First month's rent-free." You know, "We're even throwing a washer and a dryer." And the reason for that is, and it's not rocket science, it's supply and demand. It's however many units you have available for the population. And obviously, we've had an influx of residents that have come here. I think our census data tells us that forty-eight thousand additional residents came to the City of Fresno in the last ten years. We have obviously not kept up with the housing inventory that we need. And I disagree a little bit with some of my colleagues. I think this is a problem that we can literally build ourselves out of because I've seen it done in the past. Now, the question is, what type of products do we provide out there? And this is where I think, Mayor, your teams work on tallying exactly what the need is out there, three-bedroom homes, apartments that we need, affordable apartments. And to my colleagues' points, I think there's a reason why there are folks that don't want to build because, you know, they can't charge five hundred dollars a month. I think that's where we can come in and do our part in making sure that we can afford those opportunities. But I just want to briefly recap for members of the public because I think oftentimes that is lost in the last couple of years. And this is, I think, one of the driving forces in why we're here. Part of that has been, you know, the lack of housing, but other has been the pandemic and people that have not had an opportunity to have those, you know, housing resources, so to speak. But this council has, during the last couple of years, put their money where their mouth is. And I just want to briefly outline, because I think oftentimes in these conversations, that gets lost, and I understand the reasons why. But this city council has voted and approved one right to council. We voted and approved rental assistance programs to the tune of thirty-plus million dollars. We've done utilities assistance for folks that have been hit hard. We've done an eviction, a local eviction moratorium, that, by the way, we're going to be discussing here pretty soon. We've done city-paid COVID testing vaccinations. We've done city-paid food distributions for our vulnerable folks. We've done city-paid healthcare services for vulnerable workers. And we even actually passed some anti-galgine ordinances during the pandemic for some of the daily necessities. So I want to make sure that folks understand that, you know, if we're going to make comments and accusations, let's speak with the facts because I think this council has, you know, really worked hard to make sure that we are protecting our most vulnerable. Is it perfect? Is it complete? Absolutely not. I don't think we're ever going to get to that point, but the work is in progress. Couple of weeks ago, we had the opportunity to do, Councilmember Arias and I did the groundbreaking for the two health clinics that the City of Fresno is investing here in our communities, most vulnerable communities that have been hit hard. And I just want to briefly outline a couple of concerns that I have as we go through this conversation of what these recommendations will look like. And I want to flag something for the public. I know we're talking about, you know, inclusionary zoning. We're talking about rent control. And one of the toughest parts, I think, for elected officials to really gauge is and see is where exactly is our constituency on this. But I just want to remind folks, in 2020, Proposition Twenty-One was actually on the ballot. This community has had this conversation before. And I went back and I pulled the numbers, and this is what the numbers came out to. Seventy percent of the City of Fresno's actually said no to rent control. Thirty percent said yes to rent control. Now, that was sixteen months ago, and obviously, situations have changed. We've had some inflation, and obviously, rent prices are going up. And so as we go through these conversations, I just want us to be very thoughtful about what we do policy-wise and the unintended consequences that we can have sometimes. And I just want to briefly take a look at one example that this council just dealt with not that long ago. And it was in Councilmember Bretafeld's district where we had the trailer park situation that, you know, we're working through and then we're trying to help. But there's a reason why a trailer park has not been built in Fresno since nineteen eighty-three, and that coincides when rent control was actually enacted here. And when you speak to folks, and I've actually tried to get folks to come and build trailer park homes, I have about three of them in my district. That's one of the concerns that they have. So we have to be very thoughtful that as much as we want to solve some challenges, that we don't have some unintended consequences that will further reduce the housing situation that we have here in our city. And so now we're at the point where we got to talk solutions, right? The mayor's outlined a plan, and I believe under this conversation, we've actually addressed some of the, you know, exactly what those models will look like, two-bedroom, one-bedroom. But there's one, I don't believe I read it, or maybe I didn't see it. I've actually had these conversations with some of the folks in the development community. Over on Jensen and Peach, we're actually getting ready to break ground on some single-home residential units with an additional unit attached to it where they can actually house additional folks and actually make it more dense for the community. I think those are some of the examples that we're going to have to work through and actually accommodate as we're going through that conversation. I want to work with the administration, how do we actually expand that in our community? Because I think that could be a model to replicate, whether it's, you know, additional ADU units that I think will be more affordable to get to that price point. Because as we heard from our folks in the advocacy community, there are a lot of folks that are stretched thin, right? I think, Matthew, the definition you used was thirty percent of your income is being used on rental, which doesn't leave a lot, especially for a family of four with our median income. So we have to look at, how do we make those price points more affordable? Multi-family units, obviously, we have a lot of opportunity along the Ventura corridor where we already have BRT. We've got a health clinic that's going in there. We have the infrastructure. We have schools. We have everything we need. I think we really need to hone in on those corridors and make those easier to develop. Whether we subsidize the infrastructure and make those projects pencil out, I think I would be comfortable for the sake of securing, you know, hundred-plus units. We have a great example on the King's Hand corridor with the Caesar Chavez Foundation, ninety-two units that they now have. I know the residents that live there. I know what type of quality of life they're receiving there. So I know, think those are some great models that we can use to replicate. But I want to address the elephant in the room because I don't think anybody's mentioned that. We're having a conversation about what housing looks like in Fresno, but what we also need to be considering is a regional approach to what this housing conversation looks like. Because I don't want, for the sake of us, developing a plan that I think sounds great on paper. We actually push out development to Madera, which we know that that Tesoro Viejo project and the projects that are propping up next is just going to actually lead to more income flight from the City of Fresno, more pollution from those folks that commute. We already have quite a bit of those individuals that have gone on to those housing developments over there for a number of reasons. So as we go through our housing element conversation, and now I spoke to staff, and we're actually engaging in the regional approach about the housing element and what that looks like, we obviously need to consider what type of products we're going to offer. And I think we have an opportunity to be much more competitive than those projects in Madera or Sanger or Kerman or Fowler because the last thing that I want to do is for us to adopt policies that actually push people out and make those commutes even longer. We already know we have an air quality problem. Let's not do something that's going to make that worse. So I want to thank everybody that took time out of their day to come and speak today. Mayor, thank you for starting us off with the housing plan conversation. I'm looking forward to working with Mayor Barfield. Mayor Barfield switched with Mayor Dyer. I like you better, Greg, just so you know. But Mayor, he's back there probably putting on his tan spray or something. Thank you to, thank you to the administration. Thank you to the city manager. There you go. Back from his spray tan. And thank you to my colleagues. Look forward to working with you guys now that we have a plan. Deputy Mayor Grundy, look forward to working with you. You obviously have done a lot of these models in District Five when we worked on the Habitat for Humanity. And the conversation about the land trust actually came from you when I brought this up for discussion on the council. So looking forward to working with all of our folks. But let's be thoughtful about what these next policies will look like and making sure that we actually have a good plan that we can get folks into housing because I think we're at that point now where we're growing into a big metropolitan urban area, and I think we need to adapt and we need to be creative and innovate. Otherwise, we're going to be having this discussion again in five years, and I don't think that there's any justice to our residents, especially the most vulnerable ones that are on fixed income. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Soria, you punched up.
Thank you, Council President. I do also want to say thank you to everyone that has been involved today, that has been involved over the last few months, over the last few years on this issue. Thank you to the mayor and his staff. I think this strategic plan resulted from a conversation that happened out of this dais, and I said, you know, "We're the fifth-largest city in the State of California. We're facing a crisis, and we don't have a housing strategy." And for those of you that have been kind of following my work over the last seven and a half years, I'm on my last year. Just to give you guys a little bit of history, year one, two thousand and fifteen, going back to the Swarrenjen administration, I was the first council member to ask for a budget allocation for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. At that point, that was denied. So it took about six, seven years to actually fully fund an Affordable Housing Trust Fund and look at where we're at today. So I've been talking about these issues. Unfortunately, these issues haven't, you know, garnered a lot of support. But I've been talking about these issues for a very long time, stressing the importance that we were facing a crisis then. So now it's reached much more beyond than a crisis today. And it's really sad to see just, you know, how long it's taken for us to begin to have this conversation because I feel like this is only the beginning of the conversation. We see that there is a Here to Stay report, and then we see, you know, the other proposal that has been brought by staff and the mayor who have worked over the last few months very diligently to gather some very critical information that I believe will be very helpful. You know, I think a lot of these pieces were in a lot of different places in the City of Fresno, and so I'm glad that we finally have put it together in one document where we can reference. But what we've learned today is that the issue of housing is much more complicated. It's not just about the supply and demand issue when it comes to affordability. It also is about jobs in our community, which is why I think when we go back to, you know, the original comments made by Councilmember Arias, I do, you know, want to commend the council and, you know, previous councils taking efforts to try to address some of those policies and that we've tried, you know, more recently with the citywide PLA, previously with the airports, you know, PLA, trying to be intentional about our workforce development and a pipeline of creating not just good-paying jobs but long-term careers that will have healthcare benefits, that will have a pension, that will allow people to actually own a home. And that's why I supported those policies because I believe that we have to do something different. Obviously, what we have done up to today has not worked, has only got us to the situation that we're at. And then to top it off, I think that over the last, at least in my time now, I'm with the third mayor, and every time we've had a new mayor, we've been told, "Oh, we're going to streamline the planning process." To this day, I will tell you guys, I haven't seen that done. And we're in the same place today that we were back in two thousand and fifteen when I first started as a council member. I know that we've added staff, but I don't know because I don't have direct control over staff. How do you fix some of the planning issues and the planning process that exists within our city that do cause a lot of delay? And at least from what I hear from private sector and even nonprofit affordable housing developers, it impacts the house of costing at the end of the day because time is money. So where, I know that we've, there's good talking points about streamlining, but what are those intentional pieces and overhaul of our planning department that will lead to real, real, real change and expedited processes to make sure that our housing developments happen? I know there's some things that are under our control. I understand that there's some things that are not out of our control. For example, I will go back to just personal experiences. When I first started, I wanted to see affordable housing being built in District One. It took about six years to get that project from day one, from it being a thought or a concept to actually getting it built. Some of the things that were out of our control were the funding mechanisms that the State of California has and the competitives that exist, and sometimes the lack thereof in Fresno to have the ability to compete against, you know, the L.A. metro areas and San Francisco because we didn't have local matching dollars or we didn't have other abilities to make sure that these local projects were competitive. We've moved the needle now that we have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That provides us a little bit more competitiveness. But for that time being, we missed out on an opportunity to build hundreds of affordable housing units in the City of Fresno because it wasn't a priority for us. I think I was one of the lone voices, always talking, and I've been talking about it for seven and a half years, affordable housing, affordable housing. seven and a half years, affordable housing, affordable housing. And not just, I'm not talking about just public housing. I'm talking about homeownership, because that's what I wanted to be from day one when I was talking about an Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So just, I just wanted to share that because for me, this issue has been very frustrating. It has been an issue that I've been very passionate about for the last seven and a half years, and I'm glad that we're finally having this conversation. But what really strikes me today is that not just that we're way behind, that I'm concerned that even though we've laid out some things, I don't know if the goals are realistic and really how we're going to get there. And if we don't, who's accountable? And how do we keep accountability in the goals that we have? Three years in terms of, I know maybe for folks that have been working on these issues and demanding that we take steps to help alleviate some of the challenges, it may seem a long time, but three years goes very quick. So I'm concerned that some of these goals are just, you know, unrealistic. Like, for example, 11,000, we know we have a shortage of 11,000 units, and so we're saying within the next three years, and maybe, I don't know who can address it, maybe Matt? Or if you could. I know that you talked about the two types of housing units to be built over the next three years, and, you know, that being a goal for our city. How do we plan to accomplish that?
Yeah, so first of all, thanks, Councilmember Soria. Great questions, great comments. I think we're definitely in agreement on some of the issues and also the sentiment behind the urgency around how we need to address these. I mean, the housing strategy and the over 6,000 units that we're projecting out of the investment recommended wouldn't all show up at year three, right? Or at the end of year three. What we're saying is immediately following this meeting, each of the recommendations would have their day in court before you, and we would like to work on those in earnest. And so, working on, now taking this and after presenting it, as you mentioned, day one, now it's going to work in on the work plan and bringing each of those items before you and the public for discourse and hopefully approval. That said, yeah, we have a significant gap, and as mentioned earlier, two key things. Number one, this plan is a living document. It's iterative, so it's not a static document that'll sit on a shelf. As situations change, so too should our updates to this strategy change. The other thing is that this isn't a silver bullet. It's not going to solve all of our housing needs for the city. But what it will do is make a significant dent in our existing housing shortages and addressing the needs of our unhoused. And it's the belief that if we execute this first part of the plan, subsequent three-year plans will help us ultimately solve all of our issues. And so, as the mayor mentioned earlier, this is more of a medium-term plan to, just to follow up on a question you, or a concern you had earlier about the urgency on some of the issues you've seen and experienced historically. Part of the plan recommendations specifically address some of the timeline issues and the ability to move things through the process and expedite housing. So some of those recommendations specifically. One namely is moving from, and I know we'll probably discuss this in future meetings, but moving from discretionary to a more ministerial approval process for planning that we know, and the report states, could move our approval process down from nine months to three months. Those sort of mechanisms, if we employ, could really change the speed at which we produce the housing.
Recommendation 21.
Yeah, recommendation 21. Thanks, Mayor. Also, in the doc, in the housing strategy, in the appendix, we actually put back in the operations improvement plan that we produced last year. There are recommendations regarding staffing, as you mentioned, structures and systems. And we've been working, Jennifer has been, and her team has been taking the lead, on implementing all those things now. So we probably owe an update to council to show all the things we've currently put in place and things we're working on to expedite the housing permitting and building process. And so, anyway, just wanted to make sure I responded to those things.
Is faster really faster? That's the million-dollar question, because every time I get complaints by, you know, developers or even business owners, I hear that it's not.
Yeah.
What are we doing? Because that's going to, that's part of the impact.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we're
Slowly, is faster slower?
Yeah.
Slower, faster?
We're transparent enough to say that historically, we understand why folks might feel that faster was slower, right? We understand that. But I think part of the recommendations in the operations improvement, some of those things have already been addressed. And so, one of those was hiring an actual administrator to manage the system, right? And that's happened. Another of those is working with some of the integrations with some of the systems that speak to Exela, things like Blue Beam, et cetera, and those things are happening. So there are checklist items that we're checking off, and we can show you at an upcoming meeting, hopefully, with factually, how each of the elements of our planning process, how we're reducing time year over year. We're tracking it now. And so, it's my hope, as a former developer, to be able to go back to my developer friends and say, look, we've actually made progress, again, at the mayor's leadership and request, and then with Jennifer and her team's implementation. So that's the hope.
Let me add real quick. We had a recent meeting with the BIA, who is notorious for coming in and complaining about just about everything. In our last meeting with them, one of the first things they said was, "We can't believe how much better the system has gotten over the last year. Thank you." And so, that's a credit to Matthew for what he's done with Jennifer. And it is getting better, but I will tell you, we still have much work to do.
Okay. And then, question for you, and I don't know if maybe Jennifer or you, who has the data, but how many units have we've actually produced in a three-year period pre-pandemic? Because I think that's an indicator, right? We should want to double or triple or, you know?
Yes. So our recent yearly average has been about 1,360 units. And so
That have been like built, completely built out and occupied?
These are built units annually on average. And that's why, what we're proposing, I appreciate your wanting to be cautious and realistic in our estimates. We also had that in mind. And so, our proposal proposes a vast increase in the number of units we're producing, but again, certainly not quite meeting our full need. It's audacious, but it's a responsible growth model.
Okay. And then, I know another issue that I raised many years ago, which I'm glad that the mayor has embraced as part of his plan to address homelessness, was approving a policy to bring tiny homes and legalize tiny homes. Actually, I think we were one of the first cities. I'd be curious, though, to find how many real, you know, tiny homes do we have? Because I think that that's, you know, the measure of success. Like, what have we done to try to incentivize? Because I do believe that these ADU, second home, you know, back home, could help not just the, you know, if it's the owner that is living in the primary owner of the home that could help them, you know, with the cost in their housing, but also provide another opportunity for someone to maybe have an affordable unit.
Sure. And again, thank you, Councilmember Soria, because we know that you've championed the ADU tiny home movement for some time. I think one of the things we know factually is that we have the state's, one of the state's largest tiny home builders right in our backyard, California Tiny Homes. And if you ask them, historically, they've been exporting most of their tiny homes out of Fresno. As a part of the plan, what we have is actually a desire to partner with these agencies to build and deploy tiny homes here, both for accessory units, for folks to, you know, have grandma, a family member, et cetera, or create some passive income. But also, there's a new day in terms of permanent financing for tiny homes, which we think could be a low-hanging fruit option to transition our homeless ultimately to homeownership, because they're now actually offering permanent financing on a 30-year fix for tiny homes, which we think is an option, a great option, to help folks move up the economic mobility ladder.
Our first debate on tiny homes will be tomorrow.
Yeah. We also just submitted, and we have this being carried by two of our congressmen, $5 million grant for tiny homes, tiny home villages. And I know for a fact, one of those congressmen is carrying that for us, and I believe, as well as a US Senate. So that one's happening, and we also have standard plans that are being developed right now, so that we can expedite. They're being done or finished? They're finished now. So we finally have, I think, five of them, five standard tiny home models that will expedite that process. So we are moving forward, and we have some tiny home dollars, well, we will be setting aside some tiny home dollars in this plan as well that are substantial.
And so, I'm hoping that with that in mind, that we're going to be looking at our fee structure to figure out how that is actually not a barrier to bringing these, because I know that that's what I've heard in the past. Folks have been discouraged from doing it because when they realize the cost, it's not worth it. So I think incentivizing, you know, by either reducing the fees or waiving fees for that purpose, I think, you know, should be on our list to do.
And that is exactly why we've set aside policies and dollar amounts, recommended dollar amounts for each one, so that we can do off-site improvements, fee waivers, whatever it takes to incentivize housing, creative, affordable housing like tiny homes. So, exactly right.
Okay. And then, one of the other comments that I have with on the homeownership piece, this is another area that I'm extremely interested in, have been very supportive. I think to this day, we still haven't really moved in creating a type of program, even though we've been trying to push this idea for some time. I know that there's been monies from the outside folks, like some of the private institutions that have partnered up more recently with the city and that the mayor has been out there promoting, which I think is a good thing. But I do want to see us invest more in this arena, because I think the fact of the matter that over 60% of folks are still renters is an issue in our community. And that what we are continuing, if we don't invest more, what we're saying is we're going to continue to perpetuate the current cycle of not allowing the idea to build wealth in our community for these folks that have been traditionally renters. I'd really like to see more investment in that arena. And I will tell you guys that now, being on this council for several years and understanding, you know, sometimes how some great intended policies that, you know, have been created by the feds or the state have really hindered many of our families that continue to be poor, because the policies that are in place incentivize them to stay, you know, earning those lower wages. I've heard it directly from some of my residents that they have forewent a raise or a promotion because if they make a few hundred bucks more a month, they're kicked out of their affordable housing unit. And so, how do we incentivize folks to move to have some upward mobility? I think obviously, some of these issues are more to the state, because it's some of those state policy proposals that continue to essentially just allow for the managing of poverty instead of building wealth. And what I want to make sure is that we are really, really investing a greater part of our, especially if we can, through the ARPA, more first-time homeownership opportunities, where we're not just looking at down payment assistance programs. I hope that we meet with more of the stakeholders, like the realtors, the brokers, that understand what are some of the barriers that they're seeing when folks are trying to buy their home. Because sometimes it's credit. Sometimes it's the down payment assistance. Sometimes it's the closing costs. There's a variety of barriers that is not just narrowed to the down payment assistance. And if we're really going to tackle the homeownership issue, that we're looking at the policy that is comprehensive and is going to invest in a program that is really going to help uplift families. And also, even if there's some kind of financial literacy component where people are realizing and understanding, and I hope that the Fresno Housing Authority is listening to, because they should be incentivizing to teach their families about financial literacy so that can move out of public housing. I did talk to, I did talk to the new CEO about this, because I said, we should not want to have our families staying in public housing for the rest of their lives. There are some people that are just on a fixed income, that are Social Security, that will maybe never have the option, but there are so many other families that are working families that can have the option, and we should make every effort possible to ensure that that is happening, so that people are having a shot at building wealth in our community.
Can I just address both of those? You're right on point. Tyrone Williams from the Housing Authority, they have a program, it is on self-sufficiency, that does not punish the folks that are now living in Section 8 just because of their income level, and it is, allows them to set aside dollars to save and for them to then move into homeownership. And I do want Matt to talk, if I can, about what we're doing with NARrep and the Black Realtors on homeownership and the program we do have that does exactly what Councilmember Soria talked about with the financial training.
Sure. And just to further comment on the thing with the Housing Authority, thank you, Councilmember Soria, for that. I don't want to speak for Mr. Williams, but he has very openly said that it's his desire to ensure that folks don't stay in publicly assisted housing. It's his desire for that. And so, one of the things I know that he's doing is partnering with organizations like Habitat to help folks who move on from publicly assisted housing onto affordable, I should say, homeownership opportunities. And so, I know that's something that he's working, and they're working actively on, and that's important to him. With regards to down payment assistance, it will please you to hear that, yes, to Mayor's point, we have partnered with the Realtist, that's an organization focused on first-time homeowners, first-time homebuyers that are black. We focus, we've met with NARrep, I know you and I were at an event recently for that. We've partnered with NARrep for the same reason, to help provide financial literacy, first-time homebuyer counseling, and up to $22,000 in down payment assistance for Latino first-time homebuyers. So those are two things we're actively doing, both for Black and Brown communities historically that are lower on the scale of homeowners than their counterparts. The other thing that I would say is, you'll be happy to hear that our new resurrected down payment assistance program for the city is about to be resurrected. We're waiting for PLHA agreement from the state. As soon as we get that, the final document in, we'll be able to start deploying those dollars for our own down payment assistance program. But to your point, we need to ensure that it's, our plans are comprehensive and are not just looking at the down payment assistance alone, but are considering all the cost and all the education needed for folks to get into homeownership and thrive. So
So on the homeownership program, or the down payment assistance program that we're working on, it's state-funded?
Mm-hmm.
Are we putting any of our local dollars that we have from our budget to match that or to make, have flexibility in terms of? Because what I've heard over and over since I've been talking about this is that a lot of times, it's not just about the down payment assistant that is a barrier. Are there the other costs that surround, you know, in getting to homeownership that are a real barrier? So wanting to make sure, that's why for me, if we're going to, you know, move forward policies that are going to be meaningful, is that we also have some skin in the game for that program, that it's not just reliant on state dollars for it. And how many, how much money is it that we're getting from the state?
I believe it's a million dollars, correct? Yeah, it's a million dollars.
A million dollars, that's like 40 families, if you say $25,000 down payment assistant. So again, it's a drop in the bucket.
Right.
That's what I'm saying for me, it's important that this dollar is bumped up. That's where you're going to have the more long-term impact in families, because that's how you're going to allow them to build wealth. And that's where, that's why I'm asking you guys, that you guys really consider
Sure.
allocating more dollars as we go through our budget process, too, to make sure, or through the Housing Trust Fund, that there's a chunk of additional funding going towards that, so that it's not just 40 families, so that it's maybe 100 families in our first year that will have the ability to own their home.
Point taken.
The other thing that I want The other thing that I want to touch upon when it comes to homeownership, I think that we also have to be creative and figure out ways. How do we incentivize different models, maybe like lease-to-own, right? I didn't see anywhere in the proposals, how can we begin to think outside the box? Because I think all these ideas are kind of within the same boxes that we all kind of know. It's just, you know, trying to push them more quickly or allocating additional dollars. But like thinking outside the box, how can we create policies that will incentivize folks to build maybe lease-to-own places so that folks can end up owning their home at the end of the day? So if we can explore some of those policy proposals, I think that would be also very well received. And then lastly, also on vacant lots, there's a number of vacant lots and I think that you guys kind of talked about that. Have we thought about a policy that would maybe create a very easy process to just put, you know, I don't know if, what are they called? Because I'm not a planner. But there's like a standard, you know, design or whatnot that is approved, right? And that if you want to build it in these vacant lots, that that is, you know, I don't know, 30-day process or whatever so that it expedites and we can get, you know, especially in some of these neighborhoods, infill, right, opportunities.
I'll let Jennifer respond to that one.
Yeah. So Councilmember, as a part of the five standard plans, one of the plans is actually set up for, can be placed as a single unit, a three-bedroom unit on an infill lot. So in addition to the accessory dwelling units, the tiny homes that we have, the five standard plans. So there is one that can, multiple ones can be used, but one that is a three-bedroom, two-bath that could be dropped in. And those plans will be free of charge to the public. So it'll just be identifying which parcel that they're going to put it on and then identifying the certain building permit requirements that'll need to be for the grading, et cetera. But that will be available.
Are the fees the same?
So there is a reduced fee for utilizing the plans. So instead of you purchasing plans online, these plans have already gone through building plan check. So placing a standard plan onto a parcel is about $175. We still do have to pay the COG fees. There are some other fees that are required. But essentially, our planning and building permit fees are pretty much nil.
What about the development fees, fire, parks, all that?
So for an ADU, those are not required depending on the type of ADU. But for a single-family property, if it's on a parcel that already had a structure on it, so for each unit, the components of the Build Act still allow for the waiver of those fees. The only one that would still need to be paid is fire because we passed an ordinance last year, an emergency ordinance, that everyone pays fire fees regardless of exemptions.
Okay. Wouldn't this be an opportunity though to further incentivize, especially in infill lots, if we want to see housing and we're in the middle of a crisis by eliminating these fees? I didn't see that as a proposal, so maybe that's a way to incentivize folks?
Right. So we can certainly evaluate that in light of the emergency ordinance that was adopted for fire fees, how we would be able to implement not collecting those. It's certainly something we would be willing to look at. Councilmember?
I'm not just talking about, I'm not talking about fire fees. I'm talking about, you know, all the fees that come. Like if we're trying to really do the infill, we're in a crisis, we're trying to hurry up. We have a standard plan that we're saying and we want to make sure it goes quickly.
We would just have to find an alternate funding source so we could not charge, but we would have to find a way to backfill the fee from a different funding source. Just because the way that, you know, they're all based on a Nexus study and we can't just unilaterally decide not to charge it. We could, but we just have to backfill it and Attorney's Office can help me out here. It's a legal issue. But I think we have done that in the past with some of the new pots that we've created for infill and.
Well, in the past, we did like incentives, waiver incentives, like for example, in economically disadvantaged neighborhoods. We said, "We waive these fees if you're going to develop in an economically disadvantaged, if it's going to be medical, housing, grocery store." I remember we did that incentive some time ago, so.
Yes, we can waive development fees. We just can't pass on those costs that are waived to another developer. So theoretically, at some point, those need to be backfilled with other funds.
Okay. But if we have new property, you've generated property taxes and so you would, there's an assumption, right? That now you have an improved property, therefore you have additional taxes that can circulate back into our general fund. That would be kind of my argument.
Obviously, the price tag of what we're going to have to find funding sources. We're going to have to be really creative and look at all of the various opportunities. And I think, to your point, you know, we've done that in other situations for more, you know, industrial-type development. But we can look at all options.
Yeah. Well, I think we're, given that we are in crisis mode, it seems like housing would be even, you know, a greater need that exists. And then lastly, what I just also wanted to bring up because I know that more recently it has been brought up as an issue and I'm sure that at some point it will be discussed, but it is related to housing, insurance issues and indemnification. And I know that we've had a number of discussions on this dais and even offline with the administration when it has even come to events and our risk department and insurance requirements making it harder for folks to do community events, to do business in the city of Fresno. And now I'm hearing that it may be an issue with housing. And so wanting to make sure that we look at that closely so that our insurance issue, indemnification issues don't, you know, become another barrier to development in our community.
Yeah, I know. I've heard that same issue from the building industry. And at our last meeting, they raised some issues and they referenced some things in state law. So I asked them to forward me that information. Ultimately, I think our risk tolerance is a policy decision. We can lower our risk tolerance, which will lower the insurance requirements, which means it will be cheaper. But it just means that we're absorbing the risk instead of passing the risk on. As government, we generally try to avoid risk, you know, as much risk as possible and push that off onto other parties. So if we want to, you know, kind of roll that back a little bit and absorb additional risk, that's something that we can have a discussion on. But what it will do is, if we're going to absorb risk, then we're going to have to plan in our budget to probably raise like our internal risk funds because it will be us paying for something instead of pushing the cost off onto someone else. Which if the policymakers want to do that, that's another option as well.
Okay. Well, I think that it's a fair discussion to have at minimum as, you know, as a council. And to see, that's what I wanted to figure out from your guys' perspective. This has been kind of new to me that I heard. And I know that we've had the similar issue with like events and other things, right? And so maybe it is time that as a city and as a body, we do have a discussion about how much risk are we willing to absorb in order? And if the ROI is high enough, right, for us to want to absorb some of that risk because it will incentivize either development, it will incentivize business and so forth. So I would welcome that discussion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my comments.
Council President, I just want to let you know that I have to excuse myself. I have a community meeting that starts in 15 minutes. So I don't want Councilmember Brettafield or Kerbalcy to feel like it's being disrespectful. I look forward to 10 hours tomorrow with both of you. But I do have to excuse myself.
Of course, of course.
So Councilmember Brettafield, you are next.
Yeah. And I want to say I appreciate all of the comments from everybody up here. And I want to commend Mayor Dyer for this effort, along with all of your staff, Mayor Jennifer Clark, all of your staff, Jennifer, Phil, H., and everybody that participated in this. Because it was a monumental effort. I know what's involved in doing these kinds of things. And so I appreciate it and you deserve a lot of credit. You know, I have a bit of a different philosophical orientation in terms of the role of government with this. I've certainly supported a lot of the things that we've done through the pandemic and certainly helping people. I've looked at each one of those items individually and some I've supported, some I haven't. One of the concerns I have though is the path we're going down. We're not talking about a number of things related to causes of the homelessness and where we're going to go as we proceed down this path. You know, it was Kamala Harris who was told to go to South America to look at the root causes of people crossing the border. You know, I think some of the root causes that we have for some of the homeless here, we find right within our own country in terms of the, what I consider reckless and dangerous policies enacted on a federal, state, and local level. For example, first, we have open borders here in our country for the past 15 months that have allowed over 2 million people to illegally, illegally come into our great country. Now, it's been well documented. They're bringing drugs, fentanyl, killing people. They're human traffickers, they're criminals. They're also entering California, which Newsom declared as a sanctuary state. So we are a sanctuary state, which means we welcome people coming here illegally. And those people need housing as well. The Sacramento Bee just reported that the number of illegals coming into California has dramatically increased. They said over the past 12 months, they encountered almost 202,000 illegal immigrants at the Mexico-California border. That's more than double the number of encounters seen the prior year, more than quadruple the number from 2017. They're here and they also need housing. We've had a pandemic over the past two years. This resulted in politicians on every level of government, including right in this building, on this dais, where people were thrown out of work, their businesses were closed, churches were closed, children were kicked out of school for nearly a year and a half where their parents had to stay home rather than go to work. Then government gave them checks, resulting in their becoming more dependent upon government. And government then says, "After we've taken your job, we'll now help you pay your rent." E-RAP programs and other programs like that. They also said, "We'll give you a government lawyer so you can't be evicted for not paying your rent. The rent you can't pay because we threw you out of a job." Now, these policies have resulted in its estimated 10 million unfilled jobs throughout the country. Business owners have had to close or change their business models because they can't get people to work because they can stay home and continue getting their government check. That's government. Now, government, and in particular Sacramento, has also weakened every criminal law. Not long ago, if you had a drug problem, you were not allowed to live on the street as you are today. They've changed the laws. You were required to enter a drug treatment program or you went to jail. Now government allows you to live on the street. You're also allowed to commit crime and mayhem and there are no real consequences for any of that. We can thank Prop 47, 57, AB 109, and no bail policies for this. And then our governor released tens of thousands of criminals back into our communities, many living on our street and committing more crimes, many having drug problems. Again, this has resulted in more homelessness, but none of this is addressed in any report. Now, to top off this insanity, every Saturday right here in Fresno, outside Rotting Park, the state is funding a needle exchange program that results in 20,000 needles being passed out every week to drug addicts to further continue their addiction courtesy of the taxpayers. That's been going on for years. 1 million needles handed out every year in Fresno County, furthering the addiction taking place in our community. I see nothing about that in these reports. These addicts are not required to get treatment, not at all. Their addictions are subsidized by the taxpayers and they continue resulting in homelessness and criminal activity. Now, instead of dealing with these critically important issues that I think are related to homelessness, what's being proposed is what government always does. Spend millions of taxpayer money on a problem, hoping that somehow we can spend our way out of the problem and it rarely works. What typically happens is millions of dollars of hard-earned taxpayer money is wasted. Now, we have a multitude of government examples and failures to prove that. I mean, one of the most glaring was the war on poverty launched almost 60 years ago by President Lyndon Johnson. And they spent over $22 trillion, trillion, on this war. It has not ended. Poverty is still here. That's why we're talking about homelessness. So government often is the problem, not the solution. Now locally, in LA, Los Angeles has now agreed to spend $3 billion, not 300 million over three years, but $3 billion over the next five years to house 41,000 homeless people and provide 14,000 to 16,000 beds. That was in the paper recently, in the news. Of course, their prior spending of $1.2 billion failed and it resulted in a cost of almost $837,000 per unit that they built. What's missing in all of this is accountability. We used to have accountability for people. But now we just assume the accountability for those folks. You know, here at City Hall, in a misguided effort to stop growth and development several years ago and several prior councils ago and a prior mayor ago, we closed our boundaries to development. That didn't stop the building of homes, didn't stop the economic growth that followed that housing development. It just went to Madera, it went to Clovis, it went to Visalia and elsewhere. We need to change our general plan. We need to open up so we can allow this development. We need to remove all the regulations that stop development or slow it. It isn't about government spending and creating new programs. It's having good, common sense, pro-business, pro-development policies and frankly, government getting out of the way of the private sector. Government is not the answer or solution here, but we all talk about it as it is. We talk about if we spend here, this program, that program, then we'll solve the problem. And if we just keep the funding going, we'll solve the problem. I'm not convinced that that's really what's going to happen. What I think is going to happen is we're going to continue to have this problem and government will be actively involved in it because government becomes part of the problem. And there was talk about supply and demand. Absolutely. The reason why the costs of apartments have gone up is because there's not enough. We should be building all over the place. When I visit other states like Texas, they're building all over the place. There's construction everywhere, everywhere. They're building single-family homes, they're building apartments. It's everywhere because people are coming there. They want to live there, often because of the terrible and failed policies of California. We have Californians leaving. That's the way we get out of this problem. We build because there's a need and a demand, but we also hold people accountable for criminal activity, for drug addiction. And lastly, I just want to say this, rent control does not work. And that's what these advocates are all about. That's what this whole program is about, is trying to rent control. It doesn't work. I'm going to pose it every time. And again, we're creating a government program. And one of my favorite presidents, Reagan, said, "No government ever voluntarily reduces itself in size." Government programs once launched never disappear. They never disappear. Actually, a government program is the nearest thing to eternal life we'll ever see on this earth. And I think that's very true. And the one last thing, quote, that I think speaks to this again, that he said very intelligently, "Government does not solve problems, it subsidizes them." And that's what we're doing here with hundreds of millions of dollars. We're subsidizing this. And we're going to continue this. After we're all long gone on this dais and Mayor Dyer's not here, we have a new mayor, we're all going to be talking about homelessness. We did with Lee Brands when he was here. We had a whole program. And Mayor Dyer is trying to solve the problem. But as long as we go down, where we just continue to throw money at the problem, we're never going to solve it. The reality is, we have to hold people accountable. Can't allow people to commit crimes. Can't allow them to use drugs on the street. Can't allow them to just sleep on the street. We need to hold people accountable. And government has a role, but it's not about throwing money at the problem. It's about getting out of the way and ensuring that crimes are not committed and people are accountable for their actions. Now, again, I want to commend the mayor for this effort. I know his heart is in the right place and I know, you know, listen, he got people off the highway. That was phenomenal, phenomenal. Councilman Arius and I worked, met with CHP and met with lots of people. We didn't get it done. I tip my hat to him. But we're not going to solve the problem. All we're thinking is, give people money, subsidize everything. It's not going to solve the problem. It's just going to. It's not going to solve the problem, it's just going to continue the problem. And so I'm going to certainly look at each recommendation. There will be some that I think are very good, and I will support, and there's some that I think will follow this government getting in the way and just continuing to be a problem, which I obviously won't support. Thanks.
Next, we have Councilmember Karbasi. We need to have an order in the chamber. Councilmember Karbasi?
Wait, oh, yeah, sorry.
Oh, we're going to engage, okay.
Is that okay?
Go for it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Brettafield, thanks for your comments. Thanks for being a part, you know, of this process. I know you spent a lot of hours with us. Just one thing I wanted to say, I think, you know, completely agree that government can't be the solution. I think some of the recommendations that we make are actually, the intention of those recommendations are to help build capacity of those who will also be part of the solution, right? So I think those are good. Also, in terms of housing and affordable housing, sure, this is a $260 million recommendation over three years, but when you consider the cost of housing, that's a small drop truly in the bucket of what it really takes to remedy and build sufficient housing that our community needs. So just, you know, just want to say, yes, certainly agree that we want to help build the capacity of those in the community that can help us build. We can't, and we shouldn't be the ones doing it alone, so...
And you and I, you and I are agreement on that, and I don't think I recognize you, Mac, because I didn't see you, but your efforts, I greatly appreciate. You did a phenomenal job, as the mayor talked about. And there are recommendations that I do agree with and will support, but I think we go down a very slippery slope, and I think I'll be proven five and 10 years from now when I'm not here, that there will be councils and mayors still talking about this, still throwing money at this problem, until there's real accountability and, and people are held responsible for their actions, and government gets out of the way of the private sector and allows them to do what they do well, which is meet market demands. And so, anyway, but thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Karbasi?
Okay. Is anyone still awake? For those watching at home, our entire, with the exception of staff, everyone has left. I think they're pretty tired. I want to thank everyone who participated in this process for both reports. I know it's not easy to talk about something you're so passionate about, but I do want to thank our staff, Dr. H, Phil, Jennifer, Sophia, Deputy Mayor Grundy, and everyone that supported you in doing this at the city level. Okay. This is a very complicated issue. It's not going to get easier, it's probably going to get worse before it gets better, because looking at the numbers, we're probably headed for a recession, people are facing record, yeah, thanks, Gary, people are facing record, you know, issues paying for gas, paying for rent. And looking at the data, this is actually very helpful, because it shows, one of the problems we have is we have a lot of folks that just can't afford housing, and it's an income issue. What frustrates me, look, I've been here for three years. I ran, like so many of my colleagues, because we wanted to make a difference and make things better. And we come up here, and this great conversation turns into confession. But it's not admitting mistakes, it's saying, "Well, I was with you the whole time, I didn't have anything to do with this." Public gets tired of that, that's why they leave. They get sick and tired of that. Look, we can't look at the past, we're not going to solve tomorrow's problems by playing the same old games. Like there are people that act one way behind the scenes, then come out here and use this to take potshots at the mayor. The problem is, when you take potshots at the mayor, yeah, I get the politics of it, but it affects all of you right here, it affects our city staff. And in the end, our mayor is the only person elected by the entire city. If you don't want to respect Jerry Dyer, respect the office, that's all I ask. It just, I get resentful, it gets really tiring, because it's the same old politics, the same old thing, and we're never going to solve problems, yet I know I have colleagues up here I work with, they really do care. We differ on things, we're not going to agree on this 100%, but enough games. Look, Mayor, I really appreciate you doing this. There is a quote from President Kennedy, one of my favorites, who said, "Victory has a thousand fathers, defeat's an orphan." When you're the mayor, you face that a lot, and I know you've been getting, I felt the hate in the crowd today, and it wasn't because of your policies. People don't like the color of your skin, it's unfortunate. I, maybe they don't like your hairstyle, I don't know. But the reality is, I don't think we should fuel that, we should call it out and say, "Look, we are one Fresno, and it's going to take a lot of hard work to get there, we're probably going to mess up along the way, but let's be honest with folks and stop playing all those games, because it's really tiring." So one, I'll leave you with one more quote that I think applies today. And I really do appreciate, you know, Councilmember Maxwell, Luis, you guys made some really great points, and I, and Luis, you've been a real help on talking about the general plan and moving this city forward. But there's a quote by a former local politician that, he said, I think it was, "Leadership is about having the courage to make decisions, the right decisions now for tomorrow." That's been the biggest mistake with, I think, previous city councils, where they just want to move up to the next level and pass the buck and say, "Oh, I had nothing to do with it. We made bad decisions, it's not just the state, we made bad decisions locally, and we have this new administration that wants to change things, and I'd like to be a part of that along with my colleagues." So I want to go on record, thank you.
All right, and then I had, it says Greg, but I think you're sitting in Greg's seat, Mayor, is that right?
No, no.
Okay. All right. I'm sure Greg's watching wherever he is. So we're getting close to hitting hour number six or five? I lost track here. But it's been, it's been good, a good, robust discussion. You know, our city is experiencing major growing pains. Fresno is going through what I like to call puberty, as our growth scales us into that big urban city status that we're becoming, fifth largest in the state, to be exact. And I think that's proven to be extremely uncomfortable from an economic perspective, as housing prices shoot even way further past the low wages that we already had in the city. We weren't in a great position to begin with, and the pandemic has clearly exacerbated the crisis that we find ourselves in today. But to be clear, the issue is not specific to Fresno, but again, as I stated, I think our pre-existing vulnerabilities have caused our city to experience what is probably a disproportionate impact when it comes to this housing shortage that we're in. So we heard the two robust proposals today, appreciate the administration, as well as the authors of the Here to Stay report. And we also, you know, through that, we heard an in-depth analysis of the scope of the problem. If you follow public policy in this city, you probably are aware that it's, it's very rare that the council will just take any proposal at face value without, you know, modifying it and making it our own, and something that better reflects the will of the residents that we represent across the city. So I think that's likely to happen here in the forthcoming future. So I want to share with council, with my colleagues, just some of the parameters, I think, some very light parameters, I think we ought to follow. You know, it's clear we have a market that's off, off the rails, the housing market. And I think it's clear that we have, again, housing market forces in the city that, that do warrant government stepping in to help people and put it back on track, in a way that benefits the community at large. And that's not new, it's not a new thing at all. We already have the EPP, Eviction Protection Program, we have the Rental Housing Improvement Act, among many other different programs, tools, and regulations that impact the housing market here in the city and all over. So, I mean, the long-term plan really ought to be to ultimately increase our housing stock while finding ways in the short term to help alleviate the pressure that we're seeing, that we're feeling on residents who are crunched, residents who are spending well over half of their income on housing, as we heard some of the startling statistics and numbers out of the report. So as we continue to navigate this conversation, there's no doubt that we do need to take some sort of immediate action, but I think continue to strike a balance that's not going to inhibit that long-term goal of increasing the housing stock. We've come a long way in making progress on the speed with which we do build, and, you know, just to give two stark examples of where we've been and where we're going. One, you heard from my colleague in District 1, the Link Housing Project at Blackstone and McKinley, took, like Councilmember Soria, five to six years hammering away, putting her full weight into the project, and still took that long to get 88 units of affordable housing in that commercial space on the first floor. But finally, it got done, everything came together, but it's a difficult process putting these deals together, putting the capital stack, working through the bureaucracy, it's a tough deal. So contrast that with, you go half a mile north of Blackstone, we have empty lot, roughly two-plus acres, where last summer, we put together a deal very, very quickly, and that was, you know, we voted on some dollars in June to allocate and support that project in the capital stack, and we should be breaking ground on that as soon as this spring or summer. And so that, I mean, that's, that's probably record timing for a project of this nature, for an affordable housing project, ready to get 78 more units at Clinton and Blackstone. But unfortunately, that's more of the exception than the rule, and I think we need to normalize that latter timeline that we saw here. Again, and that was me putting my, my full weight and having the support of the administration and the council to make that happen. So again, we need to find ways to normalize that latter timeline and make these projects happen faster, and get these, these rooms open faster. I know many of them, many of these projects that are built, they're accounted for before they're even finished, they're, they're all leased out, ready to go, because folks need housing in this city. So I think this council has done a lot on housing, I won't go down the list like my colleague Chavez, but we have a lot left to do despite all that we have done. And going forward, I think this council is about a month away from the city budget in June. You know, we all live at City Hall in June, we're here nonstop, and I consider that probably our prime opportunity to implement whatever direction that we ultimately are going to decide on as a body. So we've opened the conversation more publicly here today. Again, we have these two reports that are out here for public consumption, I think it's our responsibility now to, again, digest and decide what direction we're going. And again, given the dollars that are being recommended to be invested in these strategies, I think June is probably a prime opportunity. And so with that, I don't see anybody else punched up, but do want to thank everyone for participating. We had a lovely, almost five-hour meeting, got to hear from the public, got to hear the reports, got to hear from my colleagues, so now we all have an idea of kind of where we are each at, and look forward to continuing this conversation and leaning into this housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, city staff, appreciate it.
Yes, Mayor, that's a wrap. You can go have dinner.